Mr. City Council, Tuesday, January 28th. We do have a quorum. We have Mother Janie Koch here from All Saints of Fiscal School to lead us into invocation and pledge.
Pray with me. Oh, Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all administrative authority grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect and/or reelect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, would you call a roll, please?
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Pritchard.
Here.
Mayor. Here. We're on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requested comments be limited to five minutes. I have a number of people signed up, but they all are for agenda items. So if there's anyone that would like to address us on a non-agenda item, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all matters considered under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. It will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. The discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from the December 17th, 2019 regular meeting in the council or city council; B, approval of claims for January 8th, 2020 through January 21st, 2020; C, concur with mayor's appointment of Julie Montgomery to the downtown area reinvestment review committee to replace Ms. Delby Walker; D, accept and place on file the Oklahomans for Independent Living quarterly report for the months of October through December 2019; E, consider and act upon authorization of an expenditure of up to $500, 250 per person of city funds for the mayor and Councilman Brown to attend the Oklahoma Municipal League Congress of the Mayors to be held February 7th, 2020 at the Oklahoma State Capitol; F, accept and place on file the McAllister Defense Support Association quarterly report for fiscal year 2019, 2020, accept and place on file the Pride and McAllister quarterly report for the months of October through December 2019; H, consider and act upon a request by Charles Everett on behalf of Savannah High School to partner with them for the rental fee and use of Room 101 of McAllister Expo Center for their annual ACT testing; I, accept and place on file the McAllister Main Street first and second quarter reports and goals and objectives for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Would anyone like anything removed?
G.
G. Anyone else?
B.
B. Anyone else? I take a motion in a second to approve items A, C, E, F, H, and I. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll just go from the top down. Item B.
Mayor, Sherri Swift, our CFO, is handing out some additional claims for this meeting.
Mayor and council, due to some technical issues we experienced in our payables this last week, there were four payments that you have listed there in front of you that were omitted from the claims packet that you had received previously. We ask that these be included in the original packet except for approval.
Any questions or comments?
This isn't any additional expenses, this is just something that was omitted from paperwork.
Yes, we just had a technical issue when they went to put the claims listed there. Something happened in the middle of it and it just omitted these from there.
Anyone else? Take the motion in a second to approve item B. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item G, Councilman Smith.
I just wanted to call our citizens' attention to Pride's work in the fall cleanup. They collected about a quarter million pounds of trash, scrap metal, electronics, at 730 pickup loads coming through that they unloaded. The other thing, we've got to adopt a block program they're doing. They've adopted 15 miles of streets that they're cleaning. And the other thing you need to know is they're having the spring cleanup. It'll be every weekend in April. So if you've got anything that you need to get rid of, it's easy to take it to the old armory. That's all I have.
Anyone else on item G? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, motion carries. We're now on to public hearing. Any, all persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the city charter. We have five actual items tonight, so I'm going to read them all. We'll have a motion in a second to open them, and then we'll address each one while we're in the session. So the first is final performance report on fiscal year 2018, number 17283, CDBG grant, sewer line replacement project, 14th Street between Keller and Fleming area. The second is consider and act upon an ordinance of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending McAllister City Code, Chapter 22, Medical Facilities, Article 7, Section 22-248, Hospitals, Permits and Applications Requirements, Section 22-249, Ambulatory Surgical Care Facilities, Permit and Application Requirements, Package Stores, Chapter 48, Fees, Charges, and Service Rates, Article 2, Section 22-248, and Section 22-249, Repealing All Conflicting Ordinances. The third is an ordinance amending Chapter 102, Traffic and Vehicles of the McAllister City Code, Article 5, Bicycles, Division 1, Generally, Section 102 through 205, Identification Number on Frame, and Creating Ordinance, Chapter 102, Traffic and Vehicles of the McAllister City Code, Article 5, Bicycles, Division 3, Bicycle Lanes, Repealing All Conflicting Ordinances and Providing for Severability. The fourth is an ordinance creating Chapter 82, Offenses and Nuisances, Article 7, Nuisances, Division 5, Disorderly House, McAllister City Code, Amending Chapter 48 to Create Chapter 82, Offenses and Nuisances, Article 7, Nuisances, Division 5, Disorderly House, Repealing All Conflicting Ordinances and Providing for Severability. And the fifth is an ordinance of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending ordinance number 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for a severability clause in declaring an emergency. Take a motion in a second to open the public hearing. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, so we're now in a public hearing. If anyone has any interest in the final performance report for the CDBG, come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to the ordinance, amending the city code on medical facilities. Seeing no one, we'll move to the third, an ordinance amending the traffic vehicles concerning bicycles. No one. The ordinance creating the disorderly house ordinance. And finally, the budget ordinance. Seeing no one, I take a motion in a second to close public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number one, consider and act upon authorization, the mayor to sign a resolution approving CDBG grant, number 17283, sewer line and manhole replacement, and accepting the project as complete. Ms. Nancy, CDBG, we always know that we're going to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with you, with you council members. Tonight, we are to the point of moving forward with the closeout of the fiscal year 2018, CDBG grant, number 17283. The project has been completed, and it included, you have a map before you there of our project area, replacement of sewer lines and manholes in a target area of McAllister, 14th Street in the Fleming area and Keller Avenue and Fleming Avenue area. In this area, the existing lines were old clay tile lines. They were broken, had frequent backups and problematic for the city, also for the citizens. So we replaced those sewer lines and manholes in that area. And at this point, the project engineer has provided me with a certificate of completion, and we do have all the grant funds expended, which were $112,869 in matching funds, and we're ready to move forward with the closeout of the project. This resolution is your formal action to do that. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Pritchard. Second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Court, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Pritchard.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
We're on to agenda item number two, consider and act upon an ordinance of the city of McAllister, amending the hospital permitting ordinances and creating a medical development board. This, I guess, is kind of my baby, other than the one carrying it, so it's, what this ordinance does is creates a board to determine if a medical entity coming into the city is necessary. And they give them the ability to hire, to have a feasibility study done, and it does pretty well, it manages the health growth in our community. And the idea behind it, from my perspective, is we have, we have a lot of people in our community that rely on Medicare and Medicaid, and we have a lot of indigenous people that rely on our hospital for care. And my goal is to make sure that that service is always available for those people. It would be ideal if we didn't need it, but the fact of the matter is, we do need it. So what this ordinance does is anybody coming in has to play on the same field that everybody here is currently playing on. It's not trying to keep anybody out or anything like that. It's like, if, if they want to come in, they got to play by the same rules everybody else is playing. So I do have a number of people that signed up on this to speak, and I'm just going to work my way from the top down. Colin Henry.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen and women, thanks for having me here today. Again, my name is Colin Henry. I'm vice president of the Warren Clinic and a representative from St. Francis Health System, and just wanted to thank you all again for allowing us to be here on behalf of Warren Clinic and St. Francis Health System. It certainly didn't go unnoticed that, Mayor Brown, you allowed us to look at the ordinance and provide comment on that, and having a meeting with you and the city managers last week. We certainly appreciate that, and we know it's not a riot, and we appreciate you extending that to us. As you may imagine, the ordinance is very important to Warren Clinic in St. Francis. We've, feel like we've had a vested presence and interest in, in the city of McAllister since our acquisition of the clinic in 1997. And for the betterment of the last two decades, we've made a numerous amount of contributions to the city of McAllister. Some of those include over $8 million that have been continuously spent on the facility and services within the clinic. We have an average annual payroll at Warren Clinic McAllister of $8 million. That covers 75 employees, which is growing, as well as 16 physicians. Happy to note that we've recruited two more family physicians that'll be joining McAllister, one moving from out of state, one's currently resident through the Omiko program here in McAllister. And so those two physicians will open up another three employment opportunities for clinical assistance and support personnel for Warren Clinic McAllister. Community contributions over the, over the last 10 years for charity care, if families, if families gross income is 225% of the poverty level or lower, we write off the balance of those accounts. And that's, that totals to about $100,000 or $980,000 in the aggregate over the last 10 years that we've written off in charity care. Even more, we run about $20,000 in community sponsorships and memberships to the board, to the Chamber of Commerce, and the Military Defense Support Association as well. So we're excited to be a part of those. It's like other contributions we've made, our physicians at the Warren Clinic help cover unassigned ER call and address healthcare needs as patients become ill in emergent circumstances, as well as provide, we provide certain rotations for family medicine residents through the Omiko program here in McAllister. So throughout the years, as certain physicians within the Warren Clinic have been recruited away into the healthcare community, Warren Clinic has made a conscious decision not to replace those physicians and continue to compete for business, but rather make sure that we have the adequate manpower here in town. When approached by community leaders some years ago to run the ambulatory surgery center in a joint operation, Warren Clinic and St. Francis acquiesced, and I feel like that was a great opportunity for the, for the city, for the city and the citizens of McAllister. And despite physician and patient requests for both modalities, ancillary equipment, imaging throughout the years, Warren Clinic has made a pointed decision not to invest in those because other opportunities were available for the citizens of McAllister. So as we move to the ordinance, I would just like to point out some of the specific issues that we have with it in general. And as we spoke earlier, I do have a letter enumerating this in writing, and I've got that for the council and you, Mr. Mayor, that I can hand you after this. And number one would just be the general anti-competitive and undue restrictions on trade we feel that the ordinance, as it's written today, has. Specifically, it seems overly broad when it talks about no, new services can, can be done without approval of the board that would be created.
That was actually changed to facilities.
I'm sorry?
That was actually changed to facilities.
Oh, it was changed to facilities?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The second point is the inherent conflict of interest with MRHC being a board member. We feel that, I would agree, probably having a medical board isn't the best interest in not having perhaps one person, but a group of people considering new facilities that come to town. And we feel that there is a conflict of interest having someone from one of the providers in town being on that board. And finally, it seems that there's not necessarily a level ground when, when looking at those that are exempted from this ordinance would be folks in town with greater than five physicians. To my knowledge, there's not many more, other than Warren Clinic, who have five physicians in town. So that was, certainly felt like it was, it was tougher for us to continue to offer services or potentially facilities unless striking the services piece and only speaking to facilities renders that null. And I'm not sure if that was the intent or not.
Well, the intent was, per our conversation, was that you were concerned that, for instance, you had an ENT that you wanted to put in the, in the, in the Warren Clinic, that you wouldn't be able to under this ordinance without the review, but that, if, when the word was service, that, that would be a potential way to, under, to think that. However, when it changes to facility, it wouldn't, because you're not creating a new facility, you're only filling an office.
Sure, great, okay, then that certainly is, as we work in conjunction with other providers in town, we want to make sure that we can continue to do that without coming to a, to a board to request monthly if we're going to do new services or anything like that.
No, whatever you do in your building.
Certainly, understood. Well, you know, I just, one, thanks again for the opportunity today. We would like to be a part of the conversation. We're vested in the community, we don't want to leave the community. McAllister's been great for Warren Clinic, we have 16 great physicians, and we want to continue to see that grow. I would ask that we still have an opportunity to work through the document and that the council tabled this for further discussion so that we can be a part of that. And again, just respectfully request that, and I have no further comments unless there's any questions.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, sir. So the way the ordinance, you said you changed or amended the ordinance that, recommend that the ordinance be amended so they could compete basically, right? So the way it is now, you're saying you're not able to compete unless you go to, through the board monthly?
Well, I'm just saying, if we, for instance, if we were recruiting physicians, we would, and they happen to do, have a new service line, or if Dr. Bean, our medical director who's here tonight, learned a different technique at a continued medical education seminar, it would technically be a new service, but I believe that point is now moot, given that it's been struck from the ordinance.
Yes, that would be my interpretation.
There, there are concerns about whether it's St. Francis or other, I mean, from a, if you believe in capitalism, from a, the most efficient business, you know, I mean, if, whether it's in ancillary services, or it enumerates diagnostic imaging, diagnostic laboratory services, emergency services, OB services, long-term care, I still feel that there's going to be inherent restraints on trade. Warren Clinic currently does, isn't in those certain areas, but as the landscape continues to change, we would like to see that ordinance continue to be fair for all organizations in town.
So you had mentioned that there's certain got, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. You had mentioned that there are certain guidelines for services to people. I know I represent people that are retired, or, so you got, what is the cutoff here? In other words, if they needed services through you guys?
Certainly. So our, the St. Francis Health System has a charity care policy, and it's currently set at 225% of the poverty level. So if a family total income is 225% of the, of the state poverty level, we then write off, we continue to pay our physicians for providing those services, but we write off that care. So it's right at $980,000 over the last 10 years. It's roughly about $100,000 per year for, again, these are professional services.
So what is the income? I mean, those numbers are good, but what's the income for somebody living maybe on $1,200 a month and couldn't, would they, I'm sure they qualify for that.
Yes.
How would they do, just go through your?
Yes, sir, we, there's a charity application.
What about recruiting, you told me recruiting doctors.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if they go to med school and have loans, do you guys take care of those loans?
We do, yes, sir. It's, it's, there's a couple of different opportunities, and there's actually some legislation at the state at the, at the current moment, but there is the Physician Manpower Training Commission where sponsoring institutions can work through the tobacco settlement endowment trust to pay back $160,000 worth of student loans over a period of four years that's tax-free for the physicians. So it is a, it has worked to recruit physicians. To McAllister, Warren Clinic has a few that, physicians on this program, and I believe there's other physicians in town that have utilized this program.
And contractual, how long do they have to stay here?
Four years.
Okay. Okay, all right, Mayor.
Councilman Reed.
You said something about the, you felt there was a conflict of interest with the hospital being on the board. Does it matter that the board member is non, is a non-voting member? Does that change your opinion?
No, sir, it doesn't. Respectfully, only in as much as the, the board, the member would still have access to the board making the decisions and have insight on what's coming to town. I think that, for instance, if there is a, something that's right across from my office in Tulsa is a, an imaging center that's not part of St. Francis or any of the large institutions, it's a privately run, a privately run imaging center. And, you know, if you were to probably ask one of the hospitals in town, should this privately owned imaging center be put in here? When you yourself have your own imaging center, the answer would be no, for whatever reason. And, and that doesn't exist, and so there's healthy competition, both on price and types of services that are in town.
Councilman Harrison?
Could you just, it's okay, could you just summarize, just for the general public, what are you wanting and what is, what is the real issue? What is, what is your real concern?
Sure, the real concern, as, as we move forward tonight, is that the ordinance, as it stands today, there's an inherent conflict of interest with, with having a interested party on the, on the medical board as it stands. That's one concern. The, the other concern is that there's just inherent restrictions on competition, and competition fosters lower prices, it brings new, new services to town, and as it stands today, it lays out and enumerate specific services that cannot be offered unless it goes through the board. And while, while going through a board, I think is great, you see that all over the country, having, having someone that's, that's part, that's participating in this, in that market, there's a conflict of interest there.
Oh, it's okay to ask. It was my understanding that this is not a board per se that, that makes decisions on who can come in or not, that it was a review committee, more or less. Is that, did I get a misunderstanding about what it actually is?
I think you might be a little.
Could you, could you explain that?
If, if a facility were to want to come in, then they would, they would essentially apply to the city, and it would go to the board to review. There's a number of things in, in here that they would review and to determine if it was, if it was needed in the city, if it would affect the price of care in the city, a number of things like that. That board would have the right to have a feasibility study done at the cost of the applicant, to, by a professional organization, to determine if, if what, what their opinion on it was. And then they, they would make a, they'd make a recommendation to issue a permit or not make an issue of permit.
Okay, now, this is just for major facilities, it's not anything like labs and imaging places like that. It's my understanding, it's just for larger facilities.
It's less than 20 employees and less than five, it's for over, excuse me, over 20 employees and over five doctors.
Over 20, all right. Now, does this impact, does this impact the Choctaw Nation Clinic or any possibility that it's a separate entity?
They're a sovereign, sovereign nation, we can't break any rules for them.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question for clarification. Going along with Councilwoman Harrison's questioning, so if a diagnostic imaging center, for instance, came to town and had less than five physicians and less than 20 employees, that would not come before the board, that imaging center would be able to move forward without any sort of co, coming of the board, coming of the board or any sort of feasibility study?
Let me look at it again.
Okay.
I've got three ordinances in my head.
Yes, it's.
Is there a set fee for this, for this application of anybody doing that?
Let's see, here it goes. Facilities not included and therefore exempt from this ordinance include any health and medical facilities providing optical or vision examination or surgical services, any community health center that receives a federal grant pursuant to Section 330 of the Public Health Services Act, any state-owned or county-owned agency, any private medical facility employing fewer than 20 medically licensed employees and fewer than five licensed doctors.
Okay, and that was part of the language, I think, that was updated. Potentially that, so, excuse my confusion.
Like I said, I had to read it again myself.
Certainly, certainly.
One, one nice question. So, looking at this from a law point of view, Mr. Urban, is everything legal for us to do this?
Well, we've been, we've been through several versions of this ordinance, and we started with what we started out with. I think we had a significant problem with restraint of trade. I think that the ordinance in front of you, the, the city staff drafted an ordinance, the mayor has added to that ordinance, and some of those additions, I think, are problematic. And I've, I've talked to the mayor about this, but one of the constants, Mr. Keith brought us the initial ordinance and met with us, I want to say it was about 18 months ago, to describe the concerns that he had. And in that initial ordinance, the McCallister Regional Health Center was inserted into the permitting process. We had, we had an issue with that. Throughout, we, in each ordinance draft that the city has done, we've removed that potential conflict of interest. And I think, over the course of this ordinance development, we've addressed the restraint of trade issues. I still have some concerns that, you know, the mayor will say things like, that's how I interpret it, okay? There are no definition section to the ordinance, and so without guidance from the city, it's pretty much left up to the board to interpret what the different terms mean. You know, we call that ambiguity, and we'd like to, we'd like to reduce that, whether it's now or whether it's as we see, you know, problems arise with the, with the implementation of the ordinance. The ordinance was last discussed, I want to say it was maybe the end of November, December, where Mr. Keith came in and. where Mr. Keith came in and expressed his concern. The one concern he had was that the McAllister Regional Health Center was not on the board. At that time, we explained to different councilmen our concern about the conflicts of interest. A competitor in the, in the market should not be involved in our permitting process. Our permitting process is designed to make sure we have the highest quality health facilities available for the city, which I think this probably improves. But, you know, the, the addition, I think the, the mayor's addition is to try to satisfy those concerns by Mr. Keith and to satisfy the other concerns. And so what he's done is he's made the hospital member an ex officio non-voting member. Problem with that is they still have superior access. They will be involved in the deliberations of the board, they will be involved in the discussions of the board. If some of those discussions take place in executive session, they would be able to get in there and will have a right to be in there. And so my concern is you're still giving one facility a unique access to the process. They've inserted themselves in the permitting process, which is a problem. The ordinance is written, without that addition, would still allow any person affected, any facility affected, to come and address the board in their public meetings. And so the hospital would still have an ability to come before them and say, we don't think this is a good idea, we don't think there's a need. But they would do that as a concerned citizen instead of a member of the board. And so I'd like for you to just be mindful of a couple of things. There's a conflicts of interest section in the McAllister City Charter and it provides that the use of city, a, a public office for private gain is prohibited. The city council shall implement this prohibition by ordinance, the terms of which shall include but not be limited to acting in an official capacity on matters in which the official has a private interest clearly separate from that of the general public. The, the people who are providing healthcare have a, have an interest in the other healthcare facilities in this, in the city that is not the same as the other, as the rest of the public. They have an interest in quality care, but, which is everybody's interest. But they also have an interest in their feasibility, their business model, those kind of things. The city council did pursuant to that section of the charter initiate Section 2.78 of the McAllister City Code, which says, "This section is intended," and I'm skipping around here, but that's, this is from that, I'm reading from that. "This section is intended to ensure that the business of this municipality will be conducted in such a way that no public official of the municipality or those public officials appointed by the city or its mayor, the city council will gain a personal or financial advantage as a result of their position with the city so that the public trust in municipal officials will be preserved." It says this section applies to the mayor, council members, the city officers, employees, members of all boards, commissions and committees of the city and all authorities or trusts which have the city as their beneficiary. The benefit is decided, is defined in that means anything reasonably regarded as economic gain or economic advance, including benefit to any other person in whose welfare the beneficiary is interested. So it doesn't have to be personal gain. And so those are our concerns. I think there is still some ambiguity. I reviewed the ordinance that was posted last week pursuant to the charter. The change that the mayor has said doesn't appear in, in the ordinance that I have. I think that's something he wanted to change after the, after the discussion with St. Francis last Thursday. But, you know, that change to facility was not something I was aware of and it's not something that's actually in the ordinance yet. I have some concerns about how some of these terms will be interpreted and applied. And, you know, I think we've resolved most of the concerns that the city has or the city attorney has about restraint of trade. But I, I have a definite problem and see an, an actual conflict of interest in having a member of the board be a representative of the hospital, even as an ex officio non-voting member. And we've made that very clear at each stage of this process. I would say these are not minor considerations. This city has history and has a history of people abusing their office for personal gain. We have made an effort over the last 12 years to make sure that the citizens of the city have confidence in their government. That includes those boards and commissions. I think the easiest thing to do is to make sure that the board has the requirements for people with medical expertise and knowledge of the field. The ordinance that has existed here since 1997 was the city, I think it was the finance director or the CFO, which is Sherry Swift. I don't think Ms. Swift has any special knowledge in medical facilities and I don't think any of her predecessors did either. That, that, that was, all permits went through the finance department. I think having more eyes on it is probably a good idea. But if you have somebody that can influence whether a certificate of need is issued and who, what, what vendor will, will perform that evaluation about whether the facility is needed is a problem. And, you know, our job is not just to, to keep conflicts from happening, but perceive conflicts from happening. And my concern is not that the city will be sued. My concern is that we don't open ourselves up to litigation that we will lose. And so, you know, I think you'd get the same, you know, from McAllister Regional, if we were going to say that there'd be an ex officio non-voting member of St. Francis and none from McAllister Regional, they wouldn't think that was fair. They would think there was a conflict of interest. And so we've got lots of providers that, that provide medical services in the community. And I think we need to be fair to them while still trying to raise the quality of care. But this doesn't, you know, this ordinance without that not, ex officio non-voting member doesn't disadvantage the hospital in any way. But it also doesn't disadvantage the other providers either. And so I wouldn't say put them all on there because you're always going to leave somebody out and that never works. And I said that the easiest thing to do, we have people with medical expertise, the board can reach out to, to consultants that have that medical expertise if they need to. But it seems like an unnecessary conflict of interest and I see it as an actual conflict of interest. I don't think there's anybody here that hasn't heard us say that, but it has not been removed by the fact that they're an ex officio non-voting member. They still have superior access to all other providers.
Let me just real quick because I want to just say, I, I, I wouldn't disagree with the city attorney on this if we were talking about the hospital being a privately owned entity. However, it's a city-owned hospital nonprofit that are our experts on healthcare as far as this body goes. They, they, we get our information from them. That, that is why I don't, I don't see it being a conflict of interest to have someone from our hospital on the board not voting that is able to give advice.
There's no, there's no exemption for people who are a public trust with the city as a beneficiary. In this, in this evaluation and under Sherman Act of Restraint of Trade, but, you know, evaluation, they are a participant in the market. And we are, we, we do appoint members of that, of that body. We do have a very special interest in that hospital. But once you, once you start to protect or to prefer one of the, even a public member of that, member of that market, you're, you're going into very dangerous territory. And I, I just want you to be aware of that.
Good. My question is, how did we come this far and this become an item for us to bolt on if we didn't have all this legal information prior to this meeting?
We, we have provided the city staff, the mayor and all the people involved in this process, including the hospital, our legal opinion all the way through.
I want to ask this. I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time, but this is really important. It's my understanding that no sales tax go to the McAllister Regional Hospital, that they're.
They're a public trust.
They're a public trust.
Well, just to be completely clear, they get an eighth of a cent for the cancer center.
They get what?
They get an eighth of a cent.
An eighth of a cent?
That was something that the citizens voted on. They don't get a part of the general sales tax.
Just, just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion on that.
Now, when it comes to St. Francis, what is the situation with that?
They are a private hospital and so they, they don't receive any, any assistance.
So what he's wanting, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Colin Henry, that's quite all right. Colin Henry.
Oh, Mr. Henry. So what is he really wanting us to do legally? Could you explain that? I, I just, if, if, oh, could you explain that? I mean, I didn't know.
I usually have trouble explaining what other people want.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Thank you, thank you.
I, I think, I think the biggest thing is that for a myriad of reasons, there's, not the least of which is lack of definition. So it's, if you look at the four corners of this document, you can't, with any sort of clarity, truly understand if, if Warren Clinic were to have just one new modality, one new imaging, one new x-ray machine, would that be against, would we be counted as a facility? Because there's an arbitrary number of five physicians. I don't, I don't know why it was five physicians and not 10 physicians. Why wasn't it 13 and not, and not? We presume that Warren Clinic is the only group in town with more than five physicians and it feels somewhat targeted. But what we would like to do is continue to be a vested partner, be a part of this solution. We'd love to come to the table with the hospital, with the, with the councilmen and women and come up with something that we think is, is fair and protects healthcare. We want to keep healthcare here. We don't want it to leave. We don't want Warren Clinic physicians to send patients elsewhere. And we, we just want a fair shot and a, and a fair and level playing field to also continue to operate our business and serve the, the citizens of McAllister.
Ladies first. May I ask him? So none of the physicians at Warren Clinic, they don't practice at the McAllister Regional Hospital? Yes or no?
They do, yes, ma'am.
Do you know what their feeling is about any of this?
There's one in the, there's one in the audience.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think he had a great idea to table this and talk about it later.
Councilman Brown.
Well, I'm trying to figure all this out myself. I'm just trying to figure out, you, mayor, you guys have an attorney here? Have you guys have an attorney that can work together with their attorney? The hospital and the clinic, you have your own attorney here?
Yes, sir. General counsel was here last week. Unfortunately, exigent circumstance came up and he was unable to be here tonight. I do have, our, our concerns written in writing. It's, you'll have to excuse some of it because we haven't had a chance to see the new ordinance that's been proposed with some of the language that was struck, but if I may approach.
Mayor, the issue is, I mean, they've had a board member ever since I've been on here. I'm telling them I like the hospital. I started way back there, but I, I didn't know there was ever a problem.
We haven't had this board.
Oh, you told them the new board that they're reviewing? Okay, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
It's my understanding that there's going to be a citizens, citizens review board also, the, the public that can review, the reviewers?
There's, there's, there's one board, there's one board that has eight members, seven voting members, three from the public, one, one of which has to have specific medical knowledge.
Okay.
Four from, four from the city.
I'm talking about a separate board. I'm not talking about that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Pritchard.
I want to talk about something else I don't like about the ordinance. I'm, the board idea is fine with me, but I think it should be an advisory board. And instead of this appeal process to the city council, I would rather have a recommendation and the city council make the final decision. I think we were elected to make big decisions like this for the community and I personally am not comfortable passing an ordinance that gives up that responsibility to an unelected board. So I can't vote for this ordinance.
We have another, a number of, a couple of other people signed up to speak. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, and I'll remind this city council that our attorney's here who could sit here and speak to some of the concerns that Mr. Urban spoke to and maybe clarify some things. Let me read this, you know, the ordinance is not really about our local partners. Warren Clinic, St. Francis, St. John's, OSCRI, our cancer specialists, Oklahoma Heart Hospital, Urologic Specialists of Oklahoma, carrying hands, and it goes on and on. These are our partners and they've been partners here for decades, many of them. This is about our local healthcare system and the impact on our healthcare delivery system. That's what this ordinance is about. Existing partnerships have been decades old for many of our partners. We have agreements, we provide services, we share patients. With all these mentioned above and more, we compete on quality and customer service oftentimes, but more than oftentimes, we collaborate. We're collaborators. What this is really about is the for-profit tiers, the interlopers. And I've defined it as entities that would extract our healthcare resources for personal benefit at the detriment and expense of the local healthcare delivery system. I serve on the state advisory board for the governor. I serve on the governor's or served on the governor's Economic and Workforce Development Committee for Southeast Oklahoma. I'm a member of the American Hospital Association, a member of the National Rural Hospital Association. I'm a board member of the Oklahoma Hospital Association and a board member of the Oklahoma Rural Health Association. I have the advantage of seeing bad things that happen to the healthcare delivery systems in rural communities. And folks, we are a rural community. Often their hospitals are at the center of their healthcare delivery system and oftentimes are exploited. Rural healthcare is in crisis. Over 85 hospitals have closed since 2010. They've been all rural hospitals, almost 700 on the brink of bankruptcy and closure. Oklahoma is a state with one of the highest incidents of rural hospital closures. The rural safety net is eroding. It's not just a local crisis, this is a statewide crisis, but more importantly, it's a national crisis. This is why you see federal and state legislative language proposed to curb the crisis. At the same time, you're seeing opportunists migrating to rural communities to take advantage of their local healthcare systems. You do not need to look far for that type of example. Four hospitals in Oklahoma recently were turned into lab mills, bilking millions from insurance companies and subsequently closing when they were caught. The state of Louisiana just passed legislation to ban freestanding ERs to protect rural hospitals. See, Louisiana's too, also learning the lessons from Texas where a barrage of freestanding EDs and urgent care centers have opened, subsequently closing now in bankruptcy and leaving investors holding the bag. The same owner, for example, that Mr. Collins talked about owns the two freestanding EDs in Oklahoma, one in Tulsa and one in Oklahoma City. Yes, the same ones that left bankruptcy in Texas in ruins. Perhaps there will be some Oklahoma legislative language that will better manage that situation in Oklahoma as well. There are so many more examples. My colleagues and I were challenged to review municipality, county or city ordinances in our local communities that manage or shape the local healthcare delivery system landscape. We were asked to do this to protect essential services being provided. If an ordinance, ordinance did not exist, we were to consider developing one. There were many examples across the state of these and counties and in the country of these ordinance that exist. Remember, this began as a result of the crisis in rural healthcare and the fragility of rural hospitals. McAllister Regional is a rural hospital and we're at the center of the healthcare delivery system for this community and other communities. Well, unbeknownst to me, I discovered there is an existing ordinance in the city of McAllister developed in the 1990s dealing with hospital and surgical facilities. Yeah, we've reviewed, we've debated on the modification of the language, but we have an existing ordinance. Yeah, we've reviewed, we've debated on the modification of the language, but we have an existing ordinance. And now we have a new one that I think is moving to provide ample oversight and accountability to the review process. Where before, one person got to make that decision, now I have multiple eyes looking at those decisions. It is about having the best interest of the community at heart, McAllister, city of McAllister and Pittsburgh County. The goal of this ordinance is to ensure that local healthcare systems and the essential services we provide are never eroded. Our city's goals and objectives are achieved, and the existing assets, including McAllister Regional Hospital, an asset of the city, is sustained. I welcome our local partners to serve on this committee. It allows for stronger oversight and accountability. I believe it's appropriate to evaluate the value proposition of any new medical facility entering the city. What is the impact, will it have in our entire healthcare delivery system? Will it serve the poor and vulnerable? That oversight allows for robust discussion and debate, which I believe are as important as anything else in that ordinance. As a reminder, 60% of all rural community hospitals are now without a hospital. The city of McAllister is blessed to have a full-service hospital. MRHC is a Level III trauma hospital, a Level II stroke center, employs a large workforce. We work alongside many of our local partners to provide primary and specialty care services to a large population that resides in a primary service area encompassing this and seven other counties. Together, the entire healthcare system in McAllister and the county produces tremendous economic impact. Anything that would compromise your local economy, our local economy, erode the availability of essential healthcare services, or compromise the existing local healthcare system should demand stronger review. I have brought our attorney, who can give you the facts on the legal proposition of this ordinance. And so I would invite her up to speak if the city council doesn't mind.
Thank you, David. I think we, a couple months ago, I was here and we talked about some of the legalities that are associated with this. My name's Karen Rieger, by the way. I'm the attorney, outside attorney for McAllister Regional Health Center with Crowe and Dunleavy in Oklahoma City. As I think Mr. Irvin indicated, there's really not an issue with the antitrust laws in connection with these types of ordinances because there's real, there's very clear case law out there that indicates when a state authorizes a municipality to regulate a certain area of business, an area of service line in that municipality that supersedes the federal antitrust laws. There's also law within the state of Oklahoma that has the same effect if the state authorizes the regulation of a service by a city that preempts the application of the state antitrust laws. Here, we have clear authority for the city of McAllister to regulate healthcare services within the community, hospital services in particular, to make sure that the services are available to all citizens of the community. And that's really the purpose, as David indicated, of this type of an ordinance. So from a legal standpoint, we're very comfortable that this type of ordinance is appropriate. As he indicated, there are many other communities across the state who have similar ordinances. We've worked with a number of those communities to put those ordinances in place over the years for the same reasons David has indicated, not to, not to bar additional services, but to make sure that there's a, there's a considerate process to go through to determine whether an additional service is necessary, what the effect of that additional service will have on the services currently available, whether it's going to impact the ability of current providers to continue to provide the same services, the same level of service to the community. So it's, it's not a bar to competition, it's just a deliberate review process to make sure that you understand what the effect is going to be. In connection with the issue about having a representative from the hospital authority, we've looked at that issue. You know, we do not believe that it's a conflict of interest because we don't believe that it's a private interest. As we've indicated, the hospital authority is a public trust beneficiary. That public trust is the city of McAllister. So you're really, it's really a public entity from that standpoint, that it operates to provide healthcare services for the benefit of the community. You appoint the board to that public trust, you have control over the membership of that public trust. There's no, no one, there's no shareholders, there's no distribution of profits. Any money, any revenues that that facility makes go back into the, into the facility, into the services provided. So there's no, we don't see it as having a private interest. Again, it works in partnership with the city to assure that healthcare services are provided to meet the needs of the community. So we may have somewhat of a disagreement there. But I think you are correct that you, you know, the hospital would have some input into the process just as a, as a facility to, to bring its point of view, if there is an application, to bring its, its point of view regarding an additional facility to the attention of the board. So, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions from a legal standpoint.
I've got, I've got one more.
Okay.
One more person signed up.
Oh.
Then we'll open it up up here to questions.
I'll just, I'll need her back up when we get ready, when you'll know if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just for a brief question.
Dr. Bean?
Hi, thank you for letting me address the council on this issue. I'm the medical director of the Warren Clinic here in McAllister, representing the physicians of the Warren Clinic here. You know, we've been part of this community since even before 1997. Many of our physicians that most of you probably know, like Dr. Cotton, Dr. Lewis, all those guys come from our clinic, and we have a strong interest in what happens in McAllister and the healthcare needs in McAllister. Unfortunately, I'm actually working on a update dated January 14th, 2020. So if it's been updated since then, I apologize for any change in language. Probably my biggest and most of the concerns that we have have to do with the Section 22-249, where we're talking about any other service or, or any existing facility listed above intending to expand its available facilities or offer new services as included. And Warren Clinic has more than five physicians and more than 20 licensed medical employees. So my issue specifically was with the services. If that's been struck, I haven't had the opportunity to actually review that latest version. What I would say is, if this has been updated, I would really like the opportunity to review it to make, you know, maybe a change in the comments I would have. My concern was I wouldn't be able to learn a new skill without having to apply for a permit. I was also concerned that if we wanted to recruit some specialist, like an ears, nose, and throat doctor or a pulmonologist, that we would have to apply for a permit to get that done. And that was really where I was coming from. So if it has been updated, I would encourage us to maybe table this and give time to review so we can figure out, you know, what the new language says, if it's been updated since January 14th, 2020. And then I had some of the same conflict of interest statements that has already been discussed. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or anything.
Any, anyone have any questions for Dr. Bean?
Yes, it's going to be the same thing, so I get, I only mess with it. I did have a question earlier, Mayor, where the legality of maybe getting sued. I don't know, I guess basically, we need to come to some kind of agreement here to remove the, make sure we're not on the hook for some kind of legal problem. And if you guys haven't talked, I thought this thing was pretty much worked out. But now I can see that there's still some issues here. So I, you want me to do something? I was going to say, I think you guys ought to talk. I don't know, I guess we're going to have to. I don't know how to, what else to do. I'm familiar with the hospital here, and I was, that's why I was going to ask a minute ago, but to the hospital lawyer, you know, if she said there's not a conflict, and our attorney saying there is a conflict, then are we going to come to an agreement here and get this behind us? I mean, get it behind you guys so we can move on with, get on with it. Right now, this, this is not, it's not smooth enough with, and my feeling is to move on with it. That's just my opinion, but I'm only one member here.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this item.
Okay, I'll second you, Mayor.
Mayor, can I ask a question before you do that? It goes to Mr. Irvin. It specifically addresses a conflict of interest issue. When we had the TIF committee, and one of the TIF committee, the downtown TIF committee, one of the committee members asked ethics board to make a ruling whether Councilman Pritchard had a conflict of interest being on the TIF committee, even though he owned the business downtown within the boundaries of the proposed district. During that meeting, I raised some of the same issues that you did. He had special access, he set the agenda, he steered the conversation as the chairman of the committee. Yet the ethics board said there was no conflict of interest, and Mr. Bill Irwin said there was no conflict. I don't understand the difference with having the hospital on this board.
Because the, because the TIF committee was an advisory committee and could not take any action, any official action, other than make a recommendation. That's, I think that's why the ethics board, I wasn't involved in the ethics board determination, but I think they said that there would be a conflict of interest if he participated in the actual approval of a project.
Which you do.
Well, I know, but I mean, all they did was recommend, all the TIF committee did was recommend something, okay? Now, you know, you're, you're responsible for your conflicts of interest. If the ethics board says you have a conflict of interest and you act, that's, that's your decision.
So the difference is, that was advisory.
Advisory only. They weren't issuing permits or denying permits.
Okay, in this case, the way I read it, if it's denied, the applicant can appeal it to the city council.
That's correct.
So isn't that sort of the same thing?
It's not an advisory. It's a final determination unless they take a specific action. I mean, it's, that's the difference.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess, aside from amending the ordinance to say, because the ordinance currently says hospital, and this gets much broader than hospital. But if we just made that one amendment, why wouldn't the, I don't know if I'm asking this too, why wouldn't the existing ordinance be sufficient?
City Councilman Pritchard, it would be nice to know who's crafting this. I want you to know something. Our fingerprints are barely on this document. And I want to apologize to St. Francis because they're not even at the table on this document. If I knew this was going to be handled this way, I would have gone directly to St. Francis and said, let's work this out because we really are partners. What I, what I'm taking offense is, I don't really have the opportunity to craft this document. It's been crafted by administration, I believe, or someone in the city council, an administration. All I want, and all I've asked for, is some oversight to make sure that the healthcare facilities that enter Pittsburgh County, city of McAllister, that there's a review body, that somebody looks at it and says, is this good for our healthcare system? Will this be good for the economy? Will this not erode services? That's all we've really asked for. Now, we've learned a lot on the way, but we are not actually crafting this document.
So if I can ask a follow-up. So you want, in addition to the existing review in the city ordinance, you want an additional board to do a level of review? Is that what you're saying?
I want a committee that reviews and says, we need to make sure that this will not erode essential services in the community. Whether they make a recommendation or not matters less to me. I want eyes on it. I want accountability and transparency. I want you, a city councilman, to know, if somebody comes in and builds a freestanding ED on 69, that you know it's going to be detrimental to your hospital. And our hospital coordinates care with primary care doctors, with Warren Clinic, with a dozen other partners. We all have a vested interest in this community. I say, if this is how it's going to be, then let me work with our partners, and we'll rewrite this ordinance. But let's let us write it.
Yes.
I just, I think that the answer here is probably to amend the ordinance to include more facilities other than hospitals or redefine hospitals. But the current ordinance that's on the books today calls for city council review of many of the same things that this proposed amendment does. And I personally, again, as a city council member, do not want to give up power to be the people that make the determination, I mean, do the review. I mean, we, the citizens of this community elected us to do this, not the city staff or whoever we would point to this board.
I'd just point out, the ordinance that we have on the books right now makes that determination is made by the chief financial officer.
That's not accurate.
Is that not right?
No, this, I don't believe, I might be wrong, but I'm reading it right now. But the city council has to make three findings before the treasurer can issue the license. The council has to make those determinations. That's, that's F. That's 22248F. I don't want to give that power up.
Councilor Nurse. Okay, I just want to say this. Mr. Keith and staff and Warren Clinic, this isn't any issue about your, the care, and, because we do believe that, I personally believe that you have compassion. I've met with some of you personally, that you have a compassion, you really feel great about this. But I think this has to do with the legality. It doesn't have anything to do. And I think, as somebody said, that if we could table this and, and.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. But of course, I don't mind tabling it, but I would prefer to have more direct opportunity to, to review and write the ordinance. This really is about protecting the healthcare delivery system in McAllister. Once again, remember, rural hospitals are in crisis, and they are closing by the dozens. And this ordinance was really to protect essential services in the community. This isn't about our local partners. This is about others. But again, without the ability to sit down and write and debate and scribe this ordinance, I feel like we're triangulating here. And I think that's the problem. And I don't know why we're triangulating.
There is a motion. There's a motion to table this till the first meeting in March. Is there a second?
I've taken it all.
Second, Councilman Brown. Any further discussion?
Again, I would like to thank all the medical staff for the service that you render, and this is not personal, it's strictly business. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Cordia Colerole, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Epstein?
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. We are, we're on to agenda. Item number three, discussion of possible action on approving the transfer of the Oakla Theater from the Ardenium of Oklahoma Charitable and Educational Foundation Incorporated in the city of McAllister per the attached resolutions and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents. Mr. Sumner?
Mr. Stasiak, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time and attention this evening. My name is Billy Sumner, Director of Tourism, and this is my executive tourism coordinator, Eddie Gray. We come before you tonight to address the Oakla Theater. At a previous council meeting, we presented you the idea and business plan to reopen the theater, making it one of the anchors to our ongoing growth downtown, increasing the nightlife and visitation to the area. At that meeting, you asked us for more details, figures, and also a potential funding mechanism. Attached in your council packet, you will find those documents, including an updated business plan, quotes for repairs and upgrades, as well as multiple options for funding, which includes one that would see our hotel motel tax increase by 2% and be dedicated to the remodel and opening of the theater, as well as future sustainability. We've heard from numerous people throughout this progress about how important this theater would be, and we still believe this project would be viable investment for tourism. The Oakla would serve as a home for the arts, including such things as community theater, choir performances, pageants, shows and plays, and could house town hall meetings and presentations throughout the day. throughout the day, as well as serve as a place to showcase movies of the past, film festivals, and series open to the public. The Oakla not only serves as a historical piece of McAllister, but also an emotional connection to many residents here and those returning to visit. Because of these opportunities, we encourage you to vote yes and accept the Oakla as a gift from the Ardenium of Oklahoma Charitable and Educational Foundation. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say, personally, I've gone down to the Oakla Theater when they were working on it. I was very impressed, and whoever did the artwork in there, I think he told me the guy's name, but it was fantastic. And things seem to be booming. I'm from Oldenville, so I need if you can get them going over there too, but I, I'm very, very, very impressed with the theater and what I've seen in there.
Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome. Did you have Amanda?
Yes. All right. Thank you so much for what you're doing for our community and the Oakla Theater. I do have several questions that people in the community have asked, and just for the general public. The amount of money that you're needing for repairs is over a million dollars?
We're estimating roughly about 1.5 million, yes.
All right, 1.5 million. And how much money is, would you make it clear, someone make it clear, Mayor, to the general public, that the money that goes to tourism and the expo is not generated from a city tax, it comes strictly from motel hotel?
Yes, it's not, it's not.
Because the people think that it comes from that, and I think that's important for us to.
No, it's generated from a total separate ordinance and fund, so 6% right now of the hotel motel tax that comes in from residents coming to visit and stay in our hotels and motels goes directly back to the tourism fund.
Okay, because the general public, they don't know that. May I ask questions? All right, how much money do we, I should say, we, the city gets from tourism per year on the average? If you're needing close to $2 million, how much is generated to tourism per year?
Right now, that 6% in the hotel motel tax generates about $850,000 a year. So our, the potential of raising that tax another 2% to 8 would generate another 200 to 250,000 a year for us.
So currently, you don't even get a million dollars?
No.
Have you given any, is it okay to continue to ask?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go this back and forth.
Go until you're done.
All right, thank you. What is the monthly expense for the, for the expo?
For the expo, that, that does vary based on the amount of events we have coming in and everything as well too, so. That I don't have ahead of me today, I just have the Oakland information.
All right, so some of your tourism money does go to the expo?
Yes, for sure, yes.
Okay. Have you been able to get any donations from any benefactors? Are we, is the city allowed to receive pledges? Do you have any pledges going toward that, or?
Because Oakland is not under our control, we have not reached out to tap that source yet, but we do anticipate a lot of funding mechanisms that would come from fundraising opportunities, yes.
But none of it's intact now?
No.
Correct, okay. And also, there is, there's a theater that in Ada is owned by the Chickasaw Nation.
The McSwain.
Have you approached the Choctaw Nation to see if they might be interested in purchasing?
That is something we have not yet.
Oh, is there any reason for that?
Again, if the Choctaw Nation purchased that, we would have no control, it wouldn't be anything that tourism would be involved in, that would be through them, a total separate entity, so we're looking at it through our ways first. That would be up to the Ardenium if they wanted to do something with the Choctaw Nation instead of the city.
Okay, and then, let's look at page 11, I'm sorry, page 10 of 35, please. On here, it has the 6.4 estimated income per month, $32,000. That's estimated, you're hoping to be able to get $32,000, correct?
That's what we're, we're estimating based off of other theaters. We have talked to the McSwain about some of the shows and programs that they put on, and what we want to do with the theater as well too, so yeah, that's just an estimation of what we hope to bring in.
Okay, and then the expenditures would be about $25,000. So, if this is estimate, how do you know for sure, you know? Help me with that, how do you know that, that these are even feasible amounts?
Right, all we can do is based on other studies and other theaters currently in operation at the moment, until we put everything to our shows, and everything, we wouldn't be able to give an exact amount, again, that's just the estimation for it.
Okay, and it's based, based on theaters that are in communities about this size? All right, let's go over to here to page 16 of 35, please. And there are several amounts here. Say for instance, auditorium area and stage area, it has the rest, are you there? Okay, rough estimation around $37,950 to $64,545. That's, that's a lot of difference in money on the estimation, so are you estimating it on the low end or the high end?
A little of both, I'm going to turn that over to Eddie real quick. He helped with a lot of these estimations as well.
Councilwoman, we did ask that our estimates to be loose to where we have a range, because we don't know what is going to be inside the building once construction started.
Right.
It could, they could open a wall, and something might be there that we have additional expenses. So we, actually, we did go on the higher end on the estimates.
Okay, and then, also on page 17 of 35, please. All right, the rough estimate, it's in bold, rough estimate, estimated total for materials and labor could run anywhere from $273,465 through the 552,960, depending upon many variables. Could you tell us what that's about, please?
Just like I said before, they don't know until they get in there and start the work, and this is just an estimate from a general contractor here in town. This whole process would have to go out to bid, so this is just general information that this council has asked for. And if you see on page, I believe, page four of 35, you'll see on the contract costs, we put the building as the renovation cost at 2.3 for $553,000, compared to his total estimate of $552,000. So we, we estimated on the high side.
Okay, and while you're on that page, oh, raising the motel tax to 2% to, wait a minute, I'm sorry, motel tax 2% and the current 6% collected to 8%, in other words, this is going to have to go out to a vote for the, to the citizens?
That's correct.
If they were to go in, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done on this, but I do have some, when I'm looking at these figures, all right, it's over a million dollars that you want in the city to invest, right, from the tourism fund, correct?
Yes.
All right, so they, they get in there and they find out that it's going to cost $2 million for repairs, what happens then?
At that point, we would definitely have to come back to the council to determine if we could either fundraise more of those, or see what we could do about finding money within the tourism fund at, at current.
All right, but what are your fundraising mechanisms at this time?
At this time, again, we have not been able to start any because it is not under our care at this time, yes.
Okay.
And one thing I wanted to let you know on, like, the general contact contractor's estimates as well too, when he says, with determining many variables, price of materials change in construction, depending on time of the year, availability, everything, so he, he could give us a quote today of what one would be, but in six months, it could be something different, so that's why there's a little bit of a range, is to allow that flexibility for us as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Councilman Smith?
Okay. My understanding is, the Oakla is now owned by the Ardenium.
Correct.
They're offering to give us the Ardenium for a dollar.
Give us the Oakland for a dollar, yes.
The Oakland. They wouldn't give it to us.
However.
Okay, so they're going to give us the Oakland for a dollar, and we have five years to renovate it, or title reverts back to the Ardenium.
That I believe was in one of the older documents, that is not, that has been taken out now, yes.
Why is it in my document here?
All I know is that the, the last, the last legal opinion I saw, and it said, the city rejected the time limit because there's too many.
So there's no time limit?
There's too, and I, I think that's what they passed, I don't know if that's, if that's the resolution that was enacted by the Ardenium.
I'm wondering, you know, Bert Thomas is president of the Ardenium, could you come and tell, you've done a lot of work on the Oakla, you know, it's not a total dump right now. You've done a lot of, you've explained some of the history of this.
Of course, we, we came in, and we've owned the building for a long time, and, and we have leased it and given it and encouraged community groups to try to come in and renovate the place and use it for various activities, but nobody's been able to take, take it to that next level, which it needs. We, over the past several years, we did the, the, partnered with the city to do the DEQ, the asbestos abatement, abatement for the Oakla, which turned into be a monumental project, and anyway, that's done, there's no more asbestos in the building. While that was going on, we took a lot of the stuff that was, you know, the old stuff that was there out, we took the, the example of the, the things on the wall with the, the scotches on the wall, the old, very ornate things, protected all that stuff, put, we got all that put aside, and then since then, we've gone in and, and put a, partially a new roof on it, stabilized the roof. Lou Crowell, if you remember Lou, put over $30,000 of his own money in the marquee to get it going again. We have recently redone the marquee yet again because of all vandalism and, you know, breaking neon and all that kind of stuff. So the marquee could be lit tonight. All that's, that, we spent a lot of money, we completely rewired everything in the, in the facility and brought in new service from the alley back through from the back all the way to the front, so all that's done. And it's just a quick story, the old building had maybe 3, 4, 500 feet of thick copper wire, that old real copper wire, all the way through the building with huge circuit breaker panels, huge, big, huge big fuses where all that went through. We took all that, stripped all that wire out, coiled it up, lighted on the stage, came back the next morning, and somebody stole it the whole time, so, anyway, all that's gone. But anyway, the, the story is that we have new electricity in the building all the way through it. We, we contracted with Humphreys, they came in, Humphreys Plumbing, and they came in from the rear of the building, worked all the way through it, we had complete new sanitary sewer, new water, all the way to the front, we've installed ADA bathrooms throughout the facility, and we've remodeled the, the lobby, we have new tile, the walls are just magnificent, carries over the motif from inside the theater itself into the lobby, and then back out, we completely rebuilt the ticket booth if you, from historically like it was, and if you, we have Marilyn Monroe standing in there right now, but some of you would remember Tina was in there, Tina Grammer was in there for years and years and years, and so we've done all that, and it's ready to go to that next step, which is decide on how it should be, the walls and the ceiling needs to be refinished. So anyway, we've done a lot, we, we feel really good about it. It's safe, it's intact, the air quality is good, it's ready to go, and as Mr. Smith said, we offered this to the city for a dollar, our first, never, we never thought about selling it to the, to the Choctaw Nation, certainly wouldn't give it to the Choctaw Nation, or wouldn't give it to anyone else, but we thought this, we've been here for a long time, Mr. Peter Ball's been here for a long time, that this was, is a good thing for us to do, to let the city take it and use it, you have time to raise the money, find the money, or don't, and if you don't spend the money on it, if you don't need to, if it doesn't work out, give it back to us. So, it's, it's, we tried to make it and craft it in such a way that it was, it met our goals, and it met the goals of the city, and also everybody's expectations. So we're just trying to do a good thing here, and take it, and give the city something to work with, and let you take it to that next step. Do you have any questions I could answer for you?
Mr. Thomas, you and I spoke yesterday on this, and, you know, my, my, I very much think this would be a really good thing for downtown McAllister, I think it'd be something we definitely should do. The only concern I had was on the fourth whereas, where it talks about the city, if we fail to preserve the historical significance, or fail to use it for the benefit of the community after five years, that it would revert back to the Ardenium.
I think, I think we addressed that, we, we've gone through several iterations of this, of that resolution, and in fact, the, the last one was kind of an emergency thing back last August, and we've talked, and, and that's not, that's something we could talk about, and I think you mentioned to me yesterday that if you spend a million dollars on the theater and you don't like it, you want to, you want to give it back to us, you would expect us then to give you a million dollars. Now, we're going to object to that part of it, probably.
Well, what I, what I would suggest is.
It's yours forever.
Well, what I would suggest is that, because it's actually your option to take it back, it's not ours to give it back.
We would not take it back, probably.
Yeah, I, I definitely would too, but it's kind of, it's kind of like, you know, the good fences make good neighbors, good contracts make good.
That's exactly right, so we want it to be a good thing, we just don't want it to, next week, we don't want to see a video arcade in there.
Right.
We want it to maintain the historical perspective of the.
Yeah, and we, you know, my concern is, would be that if we did spend a million dollars, and you decided that, or not you, because probably neither one of us will have anything to do with it in the future, but it, it was to be taken back, that, that the city should receive some compensation for what they spent. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a dollar.
Real, real low option to do that, so that's not an issue.
Councilman Smith?
Just wanted to clarify, Bert, Bert, you were saying those ADA bathrooms?
Yep.
You put in new bathrooms downstairs?
I did.
That never existed.
Never.
And did you add a room for sales of?
Yeah, we opened, yeah, we opened a wall, if you remember back in the day, the Oakla was there and right next to it, to the east, was a novelty shop, I always remembered it as a magic shop, where you could go in and buy magic tricks and cigarettes that exploded and that kind of thing, and we opened that wall between the lobby of the Oakla into that facility to allow for, you know, selling memorabilia, kind of a museum, we brought down the, the projector yesterday from the projection booth, the old projector, and we have the, the original ticket machine where you push the button and you can get your ticket, and we've got all that stuff there, and all the big reels of film that when they, when they brought in, they brought these reels, and, and quite to my astonishment, I learned yesterday that those big huge reels, the, the film spooled off of it at 100 feet a minute, and one of those reels lasted 20 minutes, and they had to change and go back and forth between projectors, so it's pretty interesting stuff, and we've got all that down there, so.
Thanks. Mayor Harrison?
I wanted to clarify the city attorney's comment. Back when we were having our, our negotiations about how to write the resolution, at first we had the five-year thing in there, and I think maybe that was even somebody from the city who suggested five years, but then when Joe had a chance to look at it, he said, well, you can't commit a future council, and so that, that needs to come out, and so we actually passed two versions of the resolution at that time, and I think the one that got included in the packet was the, was the version that had the five-year thing on it, but, but the other version has already been passed by the Ardenium Foundation, so we should be good from that aspect.
Do we have a, do we have a copy of that?
I can certainly provide you with one.
Probably somewhere.
We still announce our address, Steve Harrison, 37 Georgetown Circle. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman, I am a board member of the Ardenium Foundation, and I'm here to encourage the City of McAllister to accept the offer made and unanimously approved by our board in June of last year to gift the Oakla Theater to the city, provided the city preserve the historical significance of the theater and use it for the benefit of the community. Over the years, McAllister has lost many of its, of its historic buildings, I've only lived in McAllister for 18 years, so I have no personal memories of structures such as the Train Depot, the Carnegie Library, and the Busby Theater. I've heard. I've heard many McAllister natives reminisce about these and other landmarks and bemoan that they are no longer standing. So we are fortunate, I think, that we still have the Oakland Theater. Everyone tells me that all that of all the downtown movie theaters, the Oakland was the best. We still have the chance to restore the Oakland to its former glory and use it again for the public's enjoyment. I'm thankful that the Ardenium Foundation has played a part, along with many others, in keeping the Oakland standing. And in completing the significant restoration work that has already been done. Now is the time for the next step. It is my belief that transferring the Oakland to the city of McAllister is the best opportunity to see the theater restored and used for the public benefit. There is no doubt that the public has great interest in this issue. I look at the attendance here tonight, the many who toured the Oakland yesterday. The more than two thousand six hundred followers of the Oakland page on Facebook. People want to see this happen. Having served on the city council, I know that it's always a balancing act to allocate dollars to the various public purposes. There is never enough to go around, nor is there ever likely to be. But I'm a big believer that we can get this done. I very much look forward to attending the opening event at the fully restored Oakland Theater. I urge the council to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, I want to just make a quick apology. There was the other resolution is in our package, but is on page thirty three. And and it does not include the five year. Any any other questions, comments? Counselor Reed.
Mayor, I just want to say that I I do support this project. I I think restoring the Oakland. Goes right along with what I think some of the downtown folks are trying to do downtown with the streetscape and. The loft living and and that type of thing. Gives people a reason to go downtown, especially in the. To go see these plays. I mean, we we have people put on plays all the time. The high school puts on plays. I I go to most of them. I I think they're great. But I think it's, you know, safe to say that the city can't fund this with the current budget. And, you know, I I've proposed before that that we fund this. Project with two cent increase in the city motel tax. Right now, we're we're on the low end of the motel tax anyway, at six cents, eight cents is. Is just going to bring us in line with what Krebs has, I believe, which is still very reasonable when you look at statewide. But. It does two things. One, if it passes, it would give, you know, guaranteed funding. Come in that doesn't take away from the current funding for other projects in the tourism department. But it also gives the citizens a chance to say whether they want this or not. I mean, this is a significant amount of money. I hope they support it. But I I believe that we we should probably wait if that's what the council wants to do as far as funding this with. The new two cent proposed sales tax or not sales tax motel tax. But wait until that vote before we sign the agreement.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm in agreement with the Councilman Reed that if we could do something like that, because if we're only generating. Eighty thousand dollars per year of this project.
Eight hundred thousand.
I'm I'm sorry, eight hundred thousand a year. And there's other projects that are coming up, not only this one, but another one. And then the expo, I think what he's saying would probably be reasonable. I think they're doing a great job, but. There there needs to be another way to generate some extra money. And I think one of the gentlemen said something about fundraiser. I forgot, isn't oh, he's standing right there. I'm sorry, Sir, the Ardenium. I don't know what he's talking about fundraising, what fundraising.
They that's that was their business.
Oh, that was their there's all right, thank you.
I I I don't disagree that we need a funding mechanism for it, but I think I I don't see an issue with accepting it. And and then we bring it to a vote of people on the hotel motel tax. I'd support doing that. And the the outcome of that will determine where we move forward, how far forward we go with this, because it we can. We could we can do this. We could even do it without the hotel motel tax. It's just harder. We'll just have to be we'll have to do different allocations of of things, but we can. We don't have to complete this project in five years. I mean, ideally, we'd get it done in two, but as long as we're making progress on this, I think everybody would be happy. And there's there's parts of the building now that are definitely usable. I mean, if you go in the lobby and the the little store next door and the bathrooms and all that. It's they have done a remarkable job on on fixing that and improving it. So I'd be I I would prefer that we that we did vote on this tonight. And then we also bring the the two cent hotel motel tax, two percent, I'm sorry, hotel motel tax. On another agenda.
I've got a question. Where are you going to get the extra funding from?
Well, that's what we pay these guys to do. Counselor Counselor Smith.
I think there's merit also to accepting this gift horse. Because I think it's, you know, when it goes to a vote to see how to fund it, people can accept it or reject it. It can be turned back to the Ardenium if we want to at that point, but, you know, we have a tendency to put things off and put things off and then nothing ever gets done. I see no real problem to accepting this for a dollar and seeing what happens. If we've got capability to raise the money, so be it.
Anyone else? I would make a motion that we accept this gracious offer from the Ardenium and second by Counselor Smith. Is there any further discussion? Cora, would you call her all, please?
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
No.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're on to agenda item number four. Consider an act upon an ordinance of the city of McAllister establishing traffic laws. For bicycle lanes within the city limits of McAllister. Who gets this one?
Jerry.
Chief wants it.
You don't want me doing this.
We call him Mister. Not the way you ride.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I'm here today to bring forth a proposal. Bicycle lanes in the city of McAllister. I cannot take credit for this. Our paralegal Andrea Slade researched and developed it. But I would be tasked with enforcing it. And so here stand I. And I've read this ordinance. I don't see any problems with the ordinance. One fact, you know, I thought bicycle lanes were a good idea. But one benefit that I didn't anticipate was I have seen many, many people pedestrians. Using the bicycle lanes because most of these areas don't have sidewalks. And obviously, there's a lot of foot traffic in McAllister. And they're a little bit safer when you have the bicycle lanes there. So that's been. For me, an unexpected benefit from these markings.
You you support you support the ordinance, I'm assuming.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Smith.
You anticipate getting run by bicycle drivers getting pedestrians.
Well, the the.
This is a slightly related to this. I had somebody mention it the other day that. There was one of these bicycle lanes that had a a large number of signs going along saying it's a bicycle lane. And they were suggesting we just paint that bicycle symbol on the lane like every place else and save the money on the signs.
Councilman, if I could, those bicycle lane signs were a grant that the city received. All of those were free. And as soon as the weather gets above fifty degrees, we'll be out there painting the bicycle symbols in the bike lane. So it's it's we will have bike signs up and symbols throughout any anywhere in the city.
Counselor Reed.
Chief, what's the fine for not for noncompliance with the getting rid of it?
That we are not enforcing a fine at this. So you have to register.
Says there is an offense. So.
It is.
If there's no penalty, there's no offense. So what would be the fine for that?
We I I have spoken with.
Be a minimum fine. What's the minimum fine?
I'd have to refer to legal for that.
It's not on our fine schedule. We probably need a different ordinance to to amend the 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 fine. You know, we have a schedule of the city fine.
I thought there was something to say if it wasn't on that there. You have a general fine for everything else.
That that may be. I don't know. I don't know. It it had to run out sometime.
Mayor, I I think the I think the ordinance is fine, except for the first paragraph. I I disagree that it should be mandatory. I I think I think you would have I would I would encourage all the citizens. That want to participate to participate because I think it's a good program. But, you know, I I thought I heard some discussion the last time we had this that it should be mandatory. But I think you got to be reasonable. And and I don't think you're going to get an overwhelming response of people taking their bicycles down to the police department to get these things put on.
We have not at this point.
And it in the same token, I don't think there'd be very much enforcement. So if if you got low compliance and zero to minimum enforcement, why do we make it a rule? You know, but let's provide the service to anybody who wants to do it. But I I don't think it should be mandatory. The rest of the rest ordinance is fine.
That ordinance already passed.
I just I think we might run into a problem on on that tonight because the the there is a different ordinance that has the requirement in it.
Well, I'm going by the first paragraph here where it says that to operate a bicycle on the city street, it's got to have these. The registration. And if it doesn't, then constitutes an offense.
But I think I think there's a separate ordinance where we actually did that, the the when we when we initiated the program.
We did it back in October. But is it an offense for them not to not to register?
Well, I'm just saying, do we need? Well, I think what I'm saying is, do we need to amend that ordinance and strike that language in this one?
Maybe, but I I think if you strike that last sentence of the first paragraph, make an offense. Then you go back and look at the at the ordinance and I it's been a long time since I saw that one.
Yeah, if you if you take out the last sentence, it's fine.
And then I don't think there's a conflict, but we may need to go back and revisit it.
I have it here, but. You fans, what do we need to do, counsel?
I think it seems to me like that that was the discussion because it wasn't mandatory in there, the way I remember it.
I think Councilman Reed is going to make a motion to approve the ordinance. With the amendment of striking that last sentence in section one oh two dash two oh five.
I made that motion.
Second.
Any any further discussion?
I think that's what they need.
Steve Belcher, Bill Box sixty one, McAllister. I have a question first. Where would most likely someone go to buy a bike in McAllister? Okay, I was in Walmart today. I looked at the bike area to make sure. Chief, couldn't we put a notice of the city ordinance there when somebody buys a bike? They could see that they're supposed to register it and maybe an application that they can take and fill out and turn in and. And so people are aware that when they buy the bike in the city McAllister, because a lot of times people don't know that they're going to have to register their bikes.
Yeah, assuming Walmart was good with it, it wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, okay. Might even do something with the website or the new website.
The city PR person, our press information officer is working on that right now. Also. Councilwoman Harrison had made some good suggestions with the school system.
We got a we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Cora, would you call her all, please?
Yes, he was.
Husband Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, we we have some people upstairs. Do we get we have somebody who can check to make sure they're all down?
All six of my bikes are registered.
So we're on to agenda item number five. Conduct a public hearing on structures deemed by city staff to be dilapidated by reason of deterioration, age, or obsolescence. Inadequate provision of ventilation, light air or sanitation, neglect, need or repair, or excuse me, need of repair. Or accumulation of debris, when the same constitutes a danger to the safety of the neighborhood and consider and act upon a resolution declaring certain structures. As dilapidated and detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public. Ms. Clifton.
Good evening, counsel. We have before you a list of thirty one structures that we have recommended for condemnation. One, one through seventeen on this list are burned structures. And then the rest of them are other ones that have been identified as being dilapidated or have issues, you know, structurally. And I would like to start off that item number two, we were contacted by that property owner's attorney. It is in the process of being going through a quiet title process. They could not touch the property after purchasing it at tax sale until February. And so they asked that we postpone this. So I would like to request that we remove item two from this list. We have been contacted by a number of the property owners. Some of them wish to demolish the properties themselves. If that is the case, I would still like to go ahead and condemn those properties to ensure that something happens with them moving forward. And then we have some that would like to potentially remodel the properties. And so I'll I'll let them kind of state their case for that. And.
Could you explain the process for them to do that, even after we do this? So.
Yes.
That way we won't have to say it seven or eight times.
Okay, in the case that they are condemned structures, they do have an option to acquire a special remodeling permit. And there is a cash bond that is required for that, and it's twenty five hundred dollar cash bond. It can be in the form of cashier's check that we hold. You know, until the project is complete. The special remodeling permit is valid for ninety days. They do have the option to request extensions and they bring like a written statement requesting the extension. It comes before the city council and the council determines whether or not those extensions are granted. And they can also get their own demolition permit. And they can contract with someone on their own on a private contract to demolish the property. If it is not demolished, I believe the date that we have here would be. It would be March. If if it's not demolished by March, we will move forward with doing a demolition bid process. And then we will contract someone to demolish the structure. And they will have a period of time to pay that invoice. And if it's not paid, then we place a lien on the property. And to recover the cost of that demolition.
There was one of them find it on here. You and I've spoken. It's on Locust Street.
Yes.
Whenever we bid that one, that when that house got on fire, there's a tree that's right very close to the structure. And it's to to me, that tree looks dead and the neighbor is very concerned about the tree coming over on his property. And if we could include that tree removal along with the the bid on that house. We have a number of people that have signed up, so we'll just start from the top. Deborah Hackler, Judge Hackler.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for taking the time to hear me this evening. And I believe that I may be item number two, which is. The house located at seven twenty three South Ninth Street. Which is also known as lots two and three in the east ten feet of the vacated alley in block five forty three, South McAllister. My clients are Main Street Apartments. They did buy this property at tax sale. It was on my advice that they have not started renovating. They have been anxious to, but we had a title issue with it. And we had actually a mortgage holder that was dormant and we needed to get that person out. So they are willing and ready at any time. It's the February the fourth is when I can take a journal entry. And so hopefully, I'm asking for your forbearance to remove this and let them go ahead and and renovate. They tell me they have a very set plan already. It doesn't look like there is structural damage. It doesn't look like there's roof damage. There is not siding damage. There's been a fire. There is not siding damage. There's been a fire in the back. They're going to deal with that, take care of all of those things. They do this for a living. And so it is, this is just because of a legal problem, not because of them being neglectful in taking care of their properties.
And it is item number two.
Thank you.
Bonnie Moat? Is Bonnie Moat here? She signed up to speak.
Maybe upstairs still.
They brought everybody down. I'll go double check.
Then we'll move down to Gary Kimball.
I'm trying not to take up too much of y'all's time. I'm not here to disagree with what the inspector has went and looked at my property.
What property are you talking about?
It is his own eleven oh six and eleven oh eight North Main Street. Used to be the old Ford dealership a long, long time ago.
Dotson, too, wasn't it? Was it Cuselina's old place? Is that it?
I believe so. That's what someone told me that it used to be the Ford thing. But what I'm here to ask for is, I'm just in a bad way, not to disagree. I talked with Mr. Estrada, and he kind of gave me a rundown and a little bit of information that I didn't know. And I'm unemployed right now. I'm trying to seek employment. My funds are very limited. I totally agree. I need to get down there and get stuff cleaned up. But the way Mr. Estrada explained it to me, that one, it's two buildings, and one was kind of left over on the other one. That's the one that is now bailed down. And I know it needs to get cleaned up, but I'm really short on funds and just asking whatever timeframe, if you could work with me, because it all needs to go. But I don't have the money to do it right now. And I don't want to be a burden to the city and take out of you guys its funds. I'm just here to plead with you. If you could help me any way, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, do we need to say anything? Do we need to comment on it?
Let's get everybody to have their say. Was Ms. Moat?
There is nobody upstairs.
In that case, we've got Elias Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Denise Gonzalez Morales. I'm the transportation associate from my grandparents. They're the owner property. Their name are Lucina Vasco Lorenzo and Elias Gonzalez Hernandez. And they're the property owners of this place. They're here to want to talk about it. They can guys give them like maybe another month because there's somebody who wants to buy the property and they will contact the burner company to demolish the house.
What did what Ms. Clifton said at the beginning? It would be, it would be a month or a month and a half before it would be demolished.
So they'll give you like another month or something like that?
Excuse me?
Are they going to give me like another month?
Well, the whole process, just it doesn't, we don't do it today and they tear it down tomorrow. But it takes, it will take till sometime into March before it would happen. All we're doing tonight is saying that it's got to go. And you will have, you guys will have the opportunity to sell it or to tear it down or whatever. If you guys don't by a certain point, then we would.
Okay, I don't need to know.
Which property was that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
City manager informed me we had two other people that wanted to speak, but.
How you doing, Mr. Brown?
I'm good.
And council? I acquired my grandfather's property.
I need you to.
Acquired my grandfather's property years ago, and the property is.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Oscar Joe Rome Jr. I go by OJ Rome. And so I just wanted to see if you pull this property up. I guess there was a misunderstanding as far as getting notifications. I've received two notifications. It was to clean up the property. I have been trying to clean up the property. And if I could show you some pictures, I've had people cleaning the property and taking pictures and sending them to me in Kansas City because I don't live locally. So I've been managing property from afar. And so if I could pass these this way, if I can address over here. And went ahead and got a builder's risk insurance to go ahead and start remodeling the property. So I have no problem if you pull it off, remodeling the property and bring it. It's my grandfather's property. This is kind of my little project personally.
But did you hear Ms. Clifton on the process for the renovation that you can get? To renovate it, you would have to get a renovation permit?
Right, I heard that. But I was saying, I was trying to get it pulled off the agenda so it would be not condemned. Because it's, as you can see, the structure is still, the bones are all good. It's not a condemned. I don't feel like it's a project that needs to be condemned. I mean, so that's why I'm here, just making sure it's not even on the redemption list. I mean, I'm sure he has to make some evaluations and do things. But I'm thinking, you know, I'm asking you to pull it off. Why remodel it and get things done?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, since you're going to be remodeling it anyway.
Well, the difference is, is one's going to cost me twenty-five hundred dollars to pay for it. The other one will allow me just to go get the permit and start working on the project. That's the difference. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand. Councilman Smith?
The twenty-five hundred dollars is refundable if you do the remodel.
Well, absolutely. But what I'm looking at is, if you have someone, not just myself, but if you have someone that couldn't afford twenty-five hundred dollars, it kind of puts pressure on people. I mean, I can afford to do that, but some people cannot. And so I'm saying, number one, I don't know how the structure got on the list. Number two, I'm willing to do it. As you can see, I've taken, I've called police multiple times. They've been out to the property, and people have been arrested for trespassing. I buy stuff, people come steal it. And so I've basically brought in dumpsters and threw stuff away. And as quick as this morning, someone was arrested for trespassing again. So it's an ongoing struggle to, you know, to develop property when you have people looting your property and, you know, taking things that you're trying to restructure and trying to fix up. So this has been something that I've been trying to do for a while. But if it could be pulled off, I would really appreciate it. Any questions for me?
Okay, I make a motion. We take Mr. Rome's property all, item thirty.
Mr. Rome, how long have you owned it?
I have owned this property for, my grandfather passed away. I'd have to look. But it's been probably ten years. Over.
Councilman, I get a second. Is there a second? Second, Councilman Harrison. Now, go ahead.
Was somebody living in it at the time you?
No, my grandfather. No.
Since your grandfather passed, always lived there?
No, I just basically just maintained, like, I got a letter to maintain the yard, so I just start maintaining. I pay someone to oversee the property and maintain the yard. But I mean, I haven't done any.
It's happening, how are all these people getting this?
Well, what happened is, I called the police this morning. Like, I was over there just this weekend. I came in. And so when I went over to the property, you got people that are, there's like a bunch of land behind our property. And you got people in tents. And so the police officers were on a chase this morning, and they were chasing people back behind the property. And there's people that are living back in the woods behind the high school. And so, you know, it's an issue that you have, but it's not just our property. It's just somebody, the squatters, sitting back in there, you know, there's trash and there's everything. But your police officer this morning was on a pursuit, chasing people running just out in the woods.
So when do you anticipate starting renovation of this? Ten years?
It's okay. I understand what you're saying. I have hired someone to come over there. Mr. Westbrook said he has forty-five days, and then he'll be ready to start the project. And he's going to redo the floor and all that stuff and get it going. But I purchased a builder's permit today just so they can go start the structure. So it will take place.
Can we hear from? History on this property?
Yeah, my name is George Estrada, the building inspector. And as far as the history, this structure's been vacant for several years and has had issues with people, you know, living there, squatters. And the structure is very dilapidated. The foundation is very bad. I had to do a whole new foundation. The floor joints are rotted. Some places, there's not even floor at all. And so this structure being the way it is, it'd probably be best to tear it down. That's my opinion.
Can I elaborate on that, please?
Sure.
I develop property in Kansas City and personally have had hands-on experience. I mean, the foundation is, I mean, I don't know if he's a structural engineer, but the foundation is still there. If you look at the I-beams that I showed you pictures of, the I-beams and the I-joints are all intact. Nothing's cracked. It's got one by twelve plywood around the edges. It's got one by six roof. So it's not like a normal sheet plywood on it. It's got one by six wood all the way across it. So structurally, it is very sound. The bones are great. And so, I understand, he's looking at a floor. And some of the people, the squatters, even the police officers saw yesterday in their report, they were cutting some of the floor, using it for wood. And so it's part of the issue. And so, but the structure is still good. I mean, Mr. Westbrook said he's going to replace the floor, put the floor joints back in, and then seal it up. And I think once we start moving from that perspective, there's no problem. But if you look at the outside, I think the floor is fine. And so, but I mean, I appreciate his opinion. But, I mean, I don't think it would take that much to fix it up and get it going. And I'm willing to do it and pay for it and get things moving in the right direction.
If we, if you were to be given thirty days, so you've got the building permit, if you were to be given thirty days.
Progress will start already. Yes, hundred percent.
I just want to update the council that I have visited with Mr. Rome. He came into my office today, and I did explain the process of, you know, if it was not condemned, that he would, he could move forward with the building permit. We would be following up on this property because of the problems that we've had, you know, with it being vacant and unsecured and some of the cleanup efforts. There has been previous notices, you know, that were sent. And so we're going to continue to pay attention to this property. If it is removed and he moves forward with the building permit, we're, you know, going to work with him and make sure that it continues to move forward. If the council does decide to condemn the structure, he also has been made aware of a special remodeling permit and understands that. I think that he's got some plans for the property, and we've discussed that quite a bit in length. And also, there is a proposed ordinance that was recommended by the planning commission. It'll be coming forward to the council at the next meeting for a medical overlay district. And then I've also made him aware of that so that if he makes an investment in this property, that, you know, perhaps there's some other things that he can do with it. So we had a pretty lengthy discussion. I think that he's got some plans for the property. But I do leave it up, you know, for the council to determine whether or not to condemn this property.
Mayor, we have done this in the past for property owners who who we believe, you know, will follow through with this. I mean, everybody says they will, everybody doesn't. But I believe Mr. Rome is going to do something here because we're serious about these dilapidated structures. And if we fall, if there, you know, there will be follow-up. And I hope that we'll see progress being made.
She'll stay on me.
She will.
No doubt.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion in a second to remove the property. Is it thirteen oh two?
Thirteen oh two, North Strong, block twenty-two, block five and six.
Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Husband Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rome. Who is our, Mr. Harrison, you're up, I guess.
Thank you. I'm talking about number nineteen on the list. Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Sazek, thank you. I'm going to make an extreme investment in brevity.
You have to tell us who you are first.
I'm Terry Harrison. I'm a lawyer here in McAllister, and I represent Katisia Martin, who is listed as the owner of that property. I married Katisia Martin about fifteen months ago. She and I came up with a plan for the house just a few months ago. We have a one-year-old child. It looks like her mother or my mother is probably going to be moving into that property. And it's fifty-three steps from my front door. It is literally not next door, but just very close proximity to my house. I have the money to do it. I would prefer not to spend the twenty-five hundred dollars or tie up the twenty-five hundred dollars when I could just use the money that I have set aside to go ahead and remodel this house. If you'll give me thirty days, you'll probably never see me back in this building again. You'll probably not see me in front of this council again because this house will be fixed. I can't guarantee that had I owned it the entire length that Ms. Martin, now Ms. Harrison, had owned it, that it would be fixed. But I can assure you, this one will be fixed within thirty days. And that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Harrison?
Well, I'll make a motion where we remove this one as well.
Is there a second? Councilman Harrison, any further discussion? I'd like to hear from Ms. Clifton.
Probably going to defer to our building inspector. I don't have a lot of information on this one. He visited with Mr. Harrison today on that.
Councilman, the only issue with this structure is that it's unsecure. Structurally, it looks to be sound, and it should be safe to remodel.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We, is there anybody else? I'll give Ms. Moat one more try. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Ortiz, and I'm here regarding my father's property at two forty West Peoria Avenue, E slash two lot five. And this is my stepmother. And I have got guardianship over my father. He's in a nursing home. And I have came and cleaned the property up. It was in horrible shape. And I did come and clean it up. I have pictures of what it looks like as of yesterday. It's a strong building as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to have it taken off so we can try to sell it. My father is in a nursing home, and there's funds that, you know, they need funds. And I don't know how my stepmother feels about this, but that's where I am progressing to. And so I'd appreciate the opportunity to have it taken off. I do have somebody that has been interested in trying to maybe see about what they can do about coming and getting it and flipping it. So I do have, you know, have talked to people about it. And I do have one person that is very interested in it. So I just would like the opportunity to go forward with that without having to, you know, do anything, you know, have them see if they're going to go ahead and proceed with that and then go ahead and spend the money to redo it instead of my parents having to do it because they need the money to exist on now.
My husband had all the floors replaced in this house last year. It's got brand-new lumber in it. It's got concrete piers under it to hold it up. And it's in good shape, the floors are. And I don't know what the objection is, why they condemned it. I don't understand that. Why is it condemned?
We're going to find out in just a second.
It's two forty, um, West Peoria.
Number twenty-seven.
This structure is a non-conforming structure and has been vacant for a long time, unsecured. We have sent notices for the owners to, to deal with this. And they did try to attempt to board it up, but it's still unsecure.
But, but it's non-conforming?
Right.
Ms. Clifton, can you explain non-conforming?
Yes, the non-conformity, what it appears to be is that it is, it has a problem with the front setback, that it is not set back far enough away from the street. So with that non-conformance, it's an issue to be able to provide or to permit a building permit for this to be remodeled because it does not meet the setbacks. There is a process to request a variance from the Board of Adjustment. However, there are very strict requirements that allow them to be able to allow a variance. There has been some allowed in the past. However, there are conditions, you know, that it has to meet to be able to allow those variances to, to occur, so.
Did you, do you understand what's, what's being said?
I'm trying to understand.
Well, what it is, is, is the, the structure is not conforming with the law essentially. So the, we can't, we can't give a, a remodel permit or renovation permit or anything in that because it's not within the law to do so. There, there is a process that you can, you can attempt to get a variance. And you have to go, you have to appeal to the Board of Variances in order to do that. Board of Adjustment, so.
So it's, it's because it's too close, I mean, what is?
Essentially, it sounds like it's too close to the road.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's a, like a bridge that goes from the street over. There's a house, there's houses on both sides of it. Yeah?
The problem is, the problem is having been vacant.
Little bridge that goes to the street from there. So, and these houses are all lined up too. So I don't understand why it's, you know, it's not that close to the road or.
Mr. Pritchard?
I have two questions. How long has the house been vacant?
I'm not sure. I have came into the picture and I think it was, it hasn't even been a year. But I've been dealing, I've moved them like three times since I've been doing all this. And, you know, like I said, this summer I did come. I cleaned up the property. It was in a, a bad state. And, you know, I cleaned it up. I, you know, tried to keep the lawns mowed and, you know, done everything that I can to, to keep it from being what it was, you know? And like I said, they do need funds, you know, the, the funds are going to run out. And I'd like the opportunity to, because, I mean, what, you know, what am I going to do with the empty lot between two houses? That, that's going to be no benefit to them. I don't know how I would sell that or.
I understand that the, the, the problem is with it being non-conforming, Ms. Clifton. Oh, I'm sorry. You have another question?
Staff, if, if they had an estimation of how long it's been vacant?
I've got an estimate here. We did mail a letter in September of two thousand and eighteen for cleanup, high grass and unsecure property. So we know that at least two thousand and eighteen, it was vacant at that time. And then there's been multiple other notices sent for cleanup and high grass. And we have had to mow the property as well for, you know, not, not being maintained, so. The, the notices are sent to the address on the tax rolls, which is required by our ordinances and state law. And so whatever is listed where the property taxes go is the same address that we use to notify the property owners.
I have an additional question about the security, the property being unsecured. What does that mean?
It means that it has either open doors, open windows, holes in wall, holes in roof, anywhere that like a person or an animal can enter the property.
I'm sorry, I should have been more specific. In this particular house, what is unsecured?
I would need to ask our building inspector for enforcement.
I got some pictures here that I can pass around of the unsecure. The first one that it was, this is back in two thousand and eighteen. I don't know if you have these or not.
While, while you're doing that, how often does the Board of Adjustment meet?
They set their meetings by, they do special meetings. Usually it's following the planning commission meeting, which they meet the third Tuesday of every month.
So if, if, if they were to choose to, they could get on that agenda for the third Tuesday of February?
It's depending, well, no, because the notice requirements, they would have to make application and then acquire a radius report from the abstract office. And then the notice requirements for that application, we need about twenty days. So where we are in the month, it would probably, if they made application in February, you know, or pretty soon, we could get it on March.
But, but the, the Board of Adjustment isn't required to meet when the planning commission meets, right?
That's correct. However, we need at least twenty days to send out notices. Once they submit the application with the radius report, we publish notices and mail notices by certified mail to all property owners within three hundred feet.
So if they came in, in a week, they, they could still get it done by the end of February?
If they could get the application, the radius report done in that time.
So there's absolutely no way we can pull this and let her, because of the variances, is that the problem? Because of the variance?
The council has the, the ability to be able to pull this item and allow her that time, yes. I cannot guarantee that the, you know, what the Board of Adjustment would determine. You know, it's up to their discretion.
Well, we're trying to help people if there's going to be a financial burden. I mean, that's, I think all of us are. Mayor, can I keep? How long will it take you to sell the house? I think, didn't you say a minute ago you were going to sell it?
I, that's my plan. And I do have, you know, like I said, I've had one person that's been interested in wanting to look at it and see if it was like something that they could flip and go in there and get it ready and, and everything, you know? So, you know, they, they've seen it, but they haven't had anybody go in there to see what they're looking at yet.
Here, here's two, two things. I want to help you, but I also don't want to get the building inspector discouraged. He'd go out and do all this work and we'd pull it and, you know, so we got to be careful there. So you do have a buyer or you just?
I, I don't know. I'm seeking a buyer and, and I do have one person that has gone and looked at it and, but they haven't had anybody come in there to see the kind of money they're looking at, you know, to, to make that final decision. So I can't say that I have a definite buyer yet because of that.
But, but something, just to be completely aware of is that if the Board of Adjustment doesn't give you the variance, it has to come down.
Right.
There's not, there's, 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 we don't have, we didn't have a choice in the matter at that point.
So what I don't understand, if there's a whole block of houses and they're all set at the same.
Grandfather.
That's it?
Yeah, and when it became vacant.
And this was grandfather too, until it became vacant.
Okay, okay. So I don't, you know, I didn't understand that.
And what's the length of time? Six months vacant or? Is that it? So if it's vacant for six months or more, it loses its grandfather status.
Councilman Rege, hand it.
Mayor, this is Third Ward. And I was just going to point out that regardless if somebody bought this house, they'd have the same problem. You know? They, they still have to get a variance. And there's no guarantee they're going to get that. So my recommendation is, let's get it condemned tonight if they want to sell it, they can.
Councilman Pritchard?
This house and a lot of other houses in it, like this community, in this conversation we're having tonight, really just underscore to me, and I think a lot of people, how overly restrictive and unfair our setback requirements are. I mean, this, this house has a lot of problems, it looks like. But this whole neighborhood is probably non-conforming. And so if for six, if a six-month period of time, one of those structures falls out of use, our solution to that is to tear that house down. And to me, that is just absurd. I think this council.
That's not true.
I'm talking. You can talk when I get done. But this council should really take a look at those requirements and try to craft a policy that is more responsive to the needs, the housing policy, or the housing policy that this community deserves. I'm done.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, it looks like we're not going to be able to help her. One word, I don't, I don't, again, I'm going to repeat myself. I want to help you, but I don't want to, I know this guy works hard. I see him. He goes out and he does his job. And I don't want to, like, again, stifle him from doing it because he'll say, what's the point?
Right. I understand that. But I also have my, my parents' interest in here, you know, and.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that you got, yeah.
Keep this in mind, that if, if this structure is condemned tonight, that nothing, nothing's going to happen to it until, at the, at the very earliest, mid-May. So you would, you would have time to go to the, to get on the agenda for the, the Board of Adjustment to try to get the variance. And then, then if you can get that done, then you can actually get a permit to renovate it. But, but the very first thing you, you, you would have to do is get that variance from the Board of Adjustment. And, and there's absolutely no guarantee that, that they would agree to do that.
Right.
So if we condemn it tonight, like, like I said earlier, it's not getting tore down tomorrow. You'll, you'll have time, you'll still have time to be able to sell it. You'll have time to be able to, to go to the Board of Adjustment. And so it's, it's not imminent, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and so I don't live here. I live in Owas, Oklahoma. So where do I go to see the Board of Adjustment? Or how do I go through that process?
The lady right behind you.
She would just need to make an application and it's the second floor, second hall. And I do want to stress that there, there are, there is the application fee, the cost of the abstracter's report. And then also the publication fees. It can be anywhere from three to four hundred dollars to go through the process, plus the time. Now, in the past, this council has at times removed a property from this and asked to bring it back at a period of time. We can do that. You can condemn it tonight. You could pull it or we can bring it back.
I, I would, I would make a motion to, to remove it. And if, if the application has not been made within thirty days to, to the Board of Adjustment, that it comes back on our, the, the next available agenda for.
I would like to ask if, if we're going to do that, that it come back in March so that we have plenty of time to be able to do the notices if she makes application and allow that process and then we bring it back in March.
Any further discussion? Do you, do you understand?
Yes, thank you very, very much.
Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Which property was that?
Twenty-seven.
Councilman Pritchard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ree?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries.
Mayor?
Do you want to, do you want to get them, get them an application? If we don't have anybody, go get it.
Do you want to call him back up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kimble.
Mr. Kimble, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Mr. Kimble, now you were saying something about you, you're unemployed or you lost your job?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and from my information, that's the reason why I was just throwing myself at y'all to give me as much time as you possibly could because I'm not in denial that this thing needs to be taken care of. But from my understanding, the information I received, I would have like only thirty days. And I know there's no way possible I can come up with the funds. I don't even think I could get my bank to get me a loan because I don't have a job at the moment. But I'm hoping to procure employment here in the next week or so, hopefully. And I can get started, maybe start gathering funds to try to get this project taken care of.
Your intent is to tear it down? Your intent is to tear it down?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I'm not here to disagree with the, we talked about the, like y'all, we're talking about the grandfather laws and it's one of those buildings that fell under that. But being the part of the building that's fell down, well, that Knowlton boy is a grandfather clause. So it has to come down to be moved back from the street. And I understand that, so.
So even if we, even if we do condemn it, you would still have a month and a half, probably a little more than a month and a half. And if you're, and if you're making, if you're making progress during that time, we're not going to, we don't have a history of, if someone's, if someone's doing the work, they say they're going to work. It's as having our guy come in and tear it down.
I've already went and got estimates and I'm trying to get enough funds to the, the building that's fell to get that cleaned up. But the other building that needs to come down, that's where the bulk of the money is going to be involved in. It's still standing, but it still needs to come down.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you'll have, you'd have, you know, six to seven weeks to, to make, to, to start the project and get, get, show improvement. So show works being done on it. Because if, if, if you show us that work's being done on it, we're not going to, we're not going to contract with somebody to come tear it down.
I appreciate that because I don't, I really would not like that burden to be on the city. I'm sorry.
Well, and you might explain the process that if, that if it, it isn't torn down within the time that we competitively bid, that, that demolition and then the, the structure is, is demolished and then a lien is placed against the property. And what happens is when you sell the property or when you come in and pay the lien, you only pay back the amount that it costs to, to demolish the property. And so I know you're trying to find people to demolish the property. That's exactly what we do and it will give you time to pay it back if we did it. And so what she's, what she's indicating is that we, if there's no remodeling permit or anything like that, once it's, once it's on the list, they, they bid it and go.
So the timeline for the appeals, we will not tear it down until after May. We'll go out for bid sometime in March, but we will not let our contractor start until May. So he'll have until May to get it down himself. And we would permit a demolition permit on it. If we do tear it down, we would allow the contractor to start in May after the final appeal period that's there. And then once we tear it down, he has six months to pay that bill with us before we file a lien at the county. And then it'll go on the tax rolls. And then at that point, once the lien is filed with the county, goes on tax rolls, it does start to, interest starts to accumulate on it. Yeah.
Essentially, essentially you'd have about a year.
All right, thank, thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else?
Question. What's, is that North Town? Is that in Fifth Ward? Mr. Kimble?
It's on.
It's eleven oh six North Main, eleven oh eight.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to have that removed? Are we just going to? Okay, all right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Robbins and I'm here about the house on.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Robbins, and I'm here about the house on 800 MacArthur Lane. It had a, it caught on fire a year ago. The structure is still pretty good on it. It didn't damage really any of the structure. It was just mainly my kitchen. And I did get it gutted out, and I'm working on it. When it caught fire, I had just went through a divorce, and so I was unemployed at the time, but I am employed now. And I did talk to somebody yesterday and today, and they're on a job right now. But if it doesn't get condemned, then as soon as they get finished with their job, they're gonna start working on it to fix it up.
Mr. Estrada?
This structure seemed to caught on fire about over a year ago. Mainly focused, the fire was, seemed to be in the kitchen area. Structurally, the rest of the house is sound. It was unsecure for several, several months after that. We sent notices to the owner, and we haven't had no responses to it. This is one that I really did not want to condemn, but it was being like that and having no response, we had to move forward with it.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
As far as the no response, I go by that house every couple of weeks, maybe three, sometimes a month. And I don't always get my mail. And so I got the letter about the it being condemned, and I think it said it put it on there on the 17th. But I went by and checked the house, and I'm not always getting all my mail because of the fire. And so I, I didn't receive all my letters. Like, I have received letters, like to come mow the yard and stuff, and I did go over there and mow or whatever. And about it being, so I went and boarded up all the windows and stuff like that to secure it. So I don't get, always get all my mail, because it's at that house. But I am working on it, and they did say as soon as they get done with this job, they can start on it. I just had to wait until I was able to get a job, and now I'm employed full-time, and I'm able to have the extra money now to have them start working on it.
Any questions? Comments?
I'm gonna question, we remove this from the list?
Any further discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Counselman Pritchard?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you.
I have a question real fast. So when they do start working on it, do I need to bring you a letter or anything, letting you know that they're?
You need to get a permit.
A permit? Which they should know about all that, since they're licensed contractors.
They should, they should, they should, but ultimately, ultimately, it's your responsibility to get a letter. And one, one other piece of advice, put in a change of address.
Okay, well, I was, I was homeless for a little bit, and I was going from house to house. And so I just now was able to get into a permanent place once I started working and stuff. So I will definitely do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any, anybody else?
The only one that we had not removed, which we recommended to have removed, was item number two, 723 South Ninth.
Is there a motion, a second to remove item number two? Motion, Counselman Pritchard, second Counselman Smith, any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Counselman Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, I need a motion and a second to approve condemning all those left on the list, correct? Motion, Counselman Pritchard, second Counselman Smith, any further discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Counselman Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Clifton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you.
We're on to agenda, item number six, and I, I was informed this evening that there is a potential conflict of interest in that ordinance. So I'm sorry, yeah, due process. So I'd like to pull that tonight and bring it back at a later date, when we can get that worked out. So we'll move to item number seven. Consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the addition of one full-time position to the facility maintenance department and replacing them on the non-uniform pay plan for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Ms. Urban.
Mayor, Council. This is part of our mid-year analysis. We have a lot of, I guess, succession plans to take care of, and this is one of them. We have three people in our facility maintenance that one will retire in September, one will retire within the year, which is the supervisor and by next year. And then we have one that will be here a short time longer. So all of that information will be leaving. And we want to put someone in that department in order to start learning those facilities, in order to maintain our city facilities.
Any questions?
I talked to Pete about this earlier, about having, you know, the park where it has to go. Sets up the amount of experience. Third page, I guess, requires related experience, preferably in building construction and repair, other combinations, meets, blah, blah, blah. There is no requirement for experience here, so I'm wondering if we can add that.
Two years of experience.
Whatever you say. Thank you.
We can do that. That's my next career. I do. I got way too much time on my hands. That's true. I guess that goes with experience. Is there a motion in a second? And that's, since we're starting to get silly, motion, Counselman Smith? Anybody, anybody else? Second Counselman Harrison, any further discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please? To add the position. Yes.
Do we need to include salary?
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to, I'm sorry, agenda item, agenda item number eight. Consider and act upon an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, going all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. Ms. Swift.
Mayor and Council, before you are some budget amendments that we need to address. I have five exhibits. Exhibit number one is a capital improvement fund transfer of grant revenue, which includes funds that we foresee from PSO, O-MAG, and Choctaw the Nations. Appropriating those funds from, from the timing of purchases from prior year of a dump truck, animal control truck, and a mini excavator to additional capital projects. Exhibit number two is our, is general fund, a pass-through transfer from MPWA to capital. Exhibit number three, appropriating funds for mid-year budget and mid-year budget transfers for additional water main repairs. Exhibit number four is dedicated sales tax fund 38, appropriating funds from MPWA to bond transfer fund to cover debt service payments. And then, finally, is exhibit five, appropriating funds for additional stormwater projects that are coming forward.
Any questions? Take a motion and a second to approve. Motion, Counselman Swift, second Counselman Reed, any further discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries, and this has an emergency clause with it as well, so I'd take a motion and a second on the emergency. Motion, Counselman Smith, second Counselman Reed, any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number nine, discussion on mid-year financial update. You got the, you got the sweet spot, didn't you?
Last is best, right? We'll see. This is a requirement to look at our budget mid-year, mid-year view, to present it to you by the end of January. So this, we're getting started, even though the light.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so. It's fine. That, we're 50% through the year, and this is as of December 31st. You see these every month. We're very transparent. We have been monitoring our revenues very closely in the general fund. We are under budget 3.58% at this point in the year. And we are monitoring our expenditures. They are still under budget 1.13%. The, you have the MPWA, and we are under budget at this point in the year, 2%, almost 3% under budget in revenues. But we are under, under in expenditures 6.29% at this point in the year. So we are monitoring it. We have had some lower months on our sales tax as presented to this body. But these are our fund balances. These are the top 10, and then we just kind of summarized all other funds at the bottom. You know that our employee retirement fund, that's our defined benefit fund. You also know that the educational fund, if you see that there's $2 million there still for the, the schools, and this was from the old tax that they can do for capital improvements. We have the tourism fund that does, that is the total of both funds, expo and tourism fund, even though they're two funds. It's summarized there at 845,000. And these are as of June 30th. We always report our fund balances just as of the end of the fiscal year. But these are budgeted number, I mean, audited numbers, I'm sorry, audited numbers now. This is our reminder that this, even though we pay 9.75% sales tax in the city, we do all of our police, fire, cemetery, parks, all of our administration, all of our expenses out of 2% of that. The state, as you can see, gets 4.5%. The county gets 1.5% dedicated to streets. We have a, as we, as you know, we have the education, the infrastructure, and the McAllister Cancer Center percentage there that was just voted on last year. And then we have also, and we've had it for many, many years, the dedicated sales tax of 1%. And that's, at the top, you see our dedicated sales tax fund, 4.2 million dollars. The, that is our revenue amount, and our bond payments are 4.5 budgeted this year. So we're at a deficit as far as where we are with our bond payments. So the MPWA has to subsidize and has to, had to, since 2015, subsidize those payments to the, to the bonds. But I just wanted, this is just informational and remind everybody what we do operate off of. And that, and that's why the general 2% is highlighted there. And this is the, how it's broken down. The 2% undedicated is actually 8.5 million dollars budgeted this year. And that, it's 62% of our total budget. Our use tax is at 14%, and as you can tell from our monthly reports, it's trending up. And so that percentage has grown over the years. The oil and gas leases and royalties have gone down, and they are under budget at this time. But we monitor all of these on a monthly basis, and we do report these things, you know, on a regular basis. So I don't think any of this is gonna be a surprise. These are the ones that you see monthly. This is the 2% that we operate all of our general fund services to the community on. As you can see, we've had a couple of months now, December and January, that have not met the previous year. We are watching this closely, monitoring, so that we can make the adjustments, because we are a zero-balance budget. And so if our revenues do not meet budget, we have to cut the exact, the, the same amount of expenditures from being spent. This is the use tax, and it is definitely on a trending, January was a very, very good year, I mean, year, goodness gracious, month. It was $224,000. February, of course, came back down and was below, well, that's not, we haven't gotten February's numbers yet officially. Yes. The colors are on on February. But it does, it does continue to look up, trend upward, use tax. And then you have our water sales and our residence and commercial at the top. You see this each and every month, and this is of, as of December. The water districts and wholesale are at the bottom, and we are monitoring those. They are very susceptible to weather and those kind of things, and they are very seasonal. So we, we are actually going over our water and water sales and analysis for our Audit and Finance Committee. The next Audit Finance Committee has requested a full analysis of this, so you will probably be getting that, those numbers also coming to the council. This is what we like to talk about. We have a lot of things funded and in progress. You have on the right side, the completed amounts. But I assume that you're very familiar with these projects. The, I will point out, the street reconstruction number, we have a couple of other smaller projects that are gonna come out of that in addition to the roundabout. We have asphalt overlays and those scheduled as soon as the asphalt opens. But 50% through the year, we're looking good. And the lift stations, we haven't talked about much, but that is for the UPS lift, lift station, and it is in design. We also have the Clearwell, and we're looking for solutions to our Clearwell at this time. And then the concrete panel replacement will start next week up on Wade Watts. Okay, and I'm gonna read these line by line for you very slowly. Or not. I'm checking to see if everyone's awake. Okay, so, but you, as you can see, we have very, a lot of beaver dams. We clean alleys, we clear trees. We've got a ton of tin horns that have collapsed due to the rain and the different things. And we are addressing these on a constant and regular systematic, you know, call-in if you know about something, you know? But these are addressed, and these are a long list. We go straight into some more stormwater, and I know you had an update a few, I think about a month ago, of stormwater projects. But these are current projects, and we are, we budget amended for this on your way. That's the biggest one. But these are the projects that have been identified and to come. We want to keep you informed on all of these projects as they come and as they progress. Even though, you know, you, you see the, it's, it's nice to see it all together, so that you can see how much we've accomplished in the six months. So I would also like to point out that trimming and cleanup at intersections, we have, we started a big program to do trimming around our signs, our stop signs and our line of sight at our intersections, so the visibility is better. And so this is how many pounds we removed in each ward. And so for a total of 14,000 pounds, 14,520 pounds altogether in six months. So it, that's, that's even a safety issue. I mean, that's why we prioritized it. I'd like to pass out sheets of paper that I'd like to pass out sheets of paper that have more detail, which I won't read to you. But take it and it has by ward. What this sheet has is it has by ward, how many pounds have been swept by this sweeper, the street sweeper? How many pounds we've gotten out of the basins? How many pounds of trash? And this is from our storm system. The amount of trash, pounds of trash we've removed from the storm system and the silt, which collects on the bottom of our canals and brush. So it's it's divided out into those numbers and overall total is three million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand pounds in six months. So I wanted to, that's too big of a number not to report that to you guys. And I know it's detailed, but you have it by your ward, how many, how much we've removed. We also want to, I guess, go on with the slideshow, but this is also a report, you know, that we added headcount tonight, the facility maintenance. And that includes it, this this report includes the facility maintenance that you added tonight. But we also have other places like the airport maintenance and court clerk and and those areas that retirements and different things like that. We may, we are anticipating that we may have to add to those those areas coming soon. So and we will be coming back to you for that. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mrs. Urban, I just have one quick question. You said there was one area that there was a deficit. What was that? And I don't know what point you mentioned it on.
Deficit. Oh, the bond payments. We have a fund that's dedicated for payment of our bonds. And it's a it's a one cent of of the sales tax. But that one cent does not cover the amount of our bond payments at this time. So we have to subsidize it by transferring from MPWA to the to the dedicated sales tax fund.
Okay, and that'll relieve that deficiency.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You better lose those seniors. To lose us.
derivative to their seat.
I hope I didn't talk too fast. Not fast enough.
Honestly. Honestly, you could have been a used car salesman. All right. Has anybody got any other questions or comments on on the mid-year budget review?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Urban. Okay, we will now move on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been recently foreseen, part of the time of post on the agenda in accordance with section three one one point nine, title twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes. Do we have any new business?
No, sir, we do not.
We shall move on to city managers' report then.
Just want to talk about one problem that we, that has occurred here in the city. We were discussing earlier tonight about what happens when we remove pavement or asphalt or concrete from our streets. Down on Second Street, north of Wade Watts Avenue, we had a sinkhole that was about a two by two indentation in the street. Here again, by the time we pulled the top off of it and discovered where that sinkhole was located in that, in that street, we knew that there was two manholes. We actually found a third manhole that had been covered up. We have a bad, that one of the manholes is bad. Water is rushing into it. It has degraded the entire street down there. We have a huge hole. We will be down there doing some of the repairs. That street won't be fully open for quite some time, probably two to three weeks. And the reason is, is because we have to order a manhole. A manhole is ordered by the depth of the manhole and also where those pipes come in. So they're very specific to the location. It'll take about two weeks to get that manhole in. We'll get it installed. So we're looking at about three weeks before that street is fully open again. But this started out with a two by two sinkhole. Just wanted to give you some on Second Street, north of Wyandotte or Wyandotte. That's it.
We will go to remarks and inquiries by city council. Councilman Smith.
I just wanted to remind our citizens. We're privileged to be able to elect our leaders. We've got a an important election coming on February eleventh. So I encourage everybody to go out and vote.
Councilman Reed. Councilman Brown.
Well, one thing, Mayor, I'll be real brief. I want, I'm very proud of you guys going out and recruiting, not recruiting, taking care of demolition. And I forgot to mention Tabitha because I see her out all the time. She will get on me if I don't. So she does a good job. Well.
Councilwoman Harrison.
I forgot to thank Pastor Kelly Benson from North Town Church of Christ last, for the last meeting when he did the implication and the pledge. So thank you to that. And then Mary Factory, she turned one hundred and one years old and she is on, she lives on Cherokee. So I don't know if it's your ward or it's your ward. Six warrant, all right. So you have someone that's a hundred and one years old.
I think it's actually the first one.
They changed it.
But anyway.
Just go.
And the other quick question is, if it's election night, do we still have city council meeting?
Yes, we do.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Nice try, though.
On Ms. Factory, we did a proclamation last year on her hundred. She's a really nice lady. Councilman Pritchard.
I can't believe that's been a year. Anyway, no, I don't have anything.
But you, once you get older.
Real quick.
The mayor's comments and committee appointments will be, will be as brief as possible. We had the the homeless endangered event about, I guess, about a week or so ago. And the the count on it was sixty-six people. So there's as far as, that's the best estimate that we has have of a census on homeless. I think you could probably easily double that number. But a remarkable, remarkable turnout, incredible number of providers came. There was it was just an amazing, it was an amazing event. And Tammy Ramdazzo, who was key of putting the whole thing together, she she, if anybody knows her, Caesar should congratulate her on the job that she did on that. It was, it was, it was a truly inspiring type of event. And we will now recess the city council meeting. I would take a motion to convene as McAllister.
Oh, I'm sorry. Isn't the the McAllister News Capital, aren't they hosting a political event?
Yes.
This Thursday at
Yeah.
Six. At six o'clock and it's at the college, correct?
Vote tech.
At the vote tech, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And now I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, the motion to include approval, approval of minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item B and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, one, seven, eight, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefits for the period of January twentieth and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. I would now take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, we adjourn. Thank you, guys.